Good evening and welcome to the Millis Public Schools School Committee meeting of April 9th, 2019. This meeting is televised. Before we begin, I'd like to state that this meeting is being recorded and can be viewed on Mondays at 7:00 PM on Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 37. All meeting videos are also posted to the Millis Public Schools website under School Committee and all times on the agenda are approximate. My name is Stephen Catalano. I'm the chairperson. Ms. Roach, the secretary, is not here tonight. Ms. Briggs.
Here.
Mr. Conroy.
Here.
Ms. Gibbons.
Here.
Teacher rep Bernadette Lindgren.
Here.
Student rep Drew O'Reilly.
Here.
And the superintendent Nancy Gustafson.
Here.
Jody, has anyone signed in for open session?
No.
Okay. So we have several action items. The first action item is the consideration to approve the March 26, 2019 School Committee Meeting Minute.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Gibbons.
I make a motion to approve the 3/26/19 School Committee Meeting Minute.
Second. A motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. The next action item is the consideration to reduce fees for Millis Pride Basketball, which runs from July 8th, 2019 through July 12th, 2019. We have in our packet, there's going to be two requests. One is for Millis Pride Basketball Week, which is being run by Mr. Fallon. It runs from 8:30 to 2:30, 40 kids. They're looking for a reduction in fees. Ms. Cleary, how much are they looking for in reduction? Are they looking?
It's in requests. They just, we just usually put it before the committee and you've told them what they can have off.
If I'm not mistaken, in the past, we've done a half off. I think that's what we did last year, correct?
Yeah.
I don't know if you did last year, but I think they didn't pay anything last year when we searched.
So, Mr. Chair, can I have a, I just have a question.
Let's get it.
So the $780 that's on here right now excluding custodial, that is full rate, what, full going rate?
Twenty-six dollars an hour.
Twenty-six dollars.
And for one janitor, because this year they won't have access to class.
Yes, right, right. So they have to go to BMB, a portion of it, and they're doing a portion of it here at the high school. All right, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Gibbons.
I make a motion to waive the $780 facility rental fee excluding custodial for Millis Pride Basketball Camp, the weeks, the week of July 29th.
Motion's been moved. You got a second?
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Gibbons.
The only thing that I would ask is that maybe we track this somewhere to see what we grant each time for facility rental fees as we get these in. So maybe we could start kind of a spreadsheet just to track all the requests and what we grant, starting this year.
I think that's a possibility. I think we can do that. And just to note, before we vote, the custodial fees will have to be paid because that is above and beyond. We have to have someone in the building. So that is not something we can waive because that's an actual cost to the district. So they are still getting a nice reduction and then the custodian will be there. So a motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Everyone was an aye?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda item, or next on the agenda, is the consideration to approve Mohawk Pride Basketball to be run, that runs from 7:15 through 7:19. This is the same deal. This is, it's, the total cost would be $780 excluding custodial fees. So I would take a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Gibbons.
I make a motion to waive the $780 facility rental fees excluding custodial fees for the Mohawk Pride Basketball Camp running the week of 7:15, 29.
Second.
Second.
A motion's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Next on the agenda item is the consideration to authorize the business manager to enter into a three-year lease with Toshiba with an amount not to exceed $25,860 and $96 annually. So we have a, there's a motion to approve Mr. Wigan to enter into a three-year lease with Toshiba for just shy of $25,861. There is a memo that is in our packets and Mr. Wigan is making his way to the microphone to walk us through this.
Can I, while he's walking up, just say that I found last year's waivers and we waived all facility fees for both the Millis Pride and the other one.
Excellent. Google again.
I'm glad that we moved our, I'm glad we moved us to Google.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, for taking me.
That's excellent.
It's on the, for 24, 18 minutes for you.
I probably have it somewhere in my paper, but it would take a while. Mr. Wigan, thank you.
Okay. You'll recall in our budget deliberations that we set aside about $6,000 for a color copier for the new Clyde Brown School. Again, part of our emphasis of moving towards copiers as opposed to individual printers, both because it's more efficient and because, for example, for the art group, they can do far more different types of projects on a copier than they can on a, even a fairly hefty color printer. The deal before you that Toshiba's offered is that I can get for about $500 more than that sixty, or $6,000, I can get not one color copier, but three. So I can put one at the Clyde Brown School, which we intended. I can put one and replace a copier here at the middle high school. And I can put a smaller version in the administrative offices and replace again another copier that is older and really due to be replaced. So we upgrade our fleet. In the process, the machines that go away are three machines that are problematic, including one particular problematic machine that PPS has right now. That machine will go out. One of the other Clyde Brown machines will be cycled in to replace that. So overall, this is not only an excellent deal, but it is also one that will upgrade our fleet and make it more efficient. The other thing I would remind the committee, if you don't already know, we're using something called PaperCut, which is basically a coding system so that everyone will have a code. Actually, I say that, it may start off as a code, but I think ultimately it's going to work with the ID cards.
Oh, yeah.
Okay? And so basically, you can't just use these copiers or any of the copiers willy-nilly. Your copying job is coded, so.
Can I, Terry, are we eliminating all individual printers or is this more?
Over time, we will eliminate many of them, but not, we're not eliminating them all this year, no. But we will eliminate them over time. It's simply becoming incredibly expensive for the supplies and quite frankly, the durability of most of the printers that we have are, I mean, they're basically maybe a step above a home printer. They just really don't hold up.
So as we, as we start to thin the fleet of individual print, printers, we should look to maybe build in the expansion of this fleet.
Right.
Because we can't go from, and I don't know how many printers we have, down to three or four or five.
Correct.
That's going to really impact workflow.
And there will be, there will come a time, I don't think it's going to be so much next year, perhaps the year after, would be the FY '22 budget, that you may see us come to you and say, all right, we'd maybe like to locate an additional copier in a particular location in this building, in a particular location in Clyde Brown, but in lieu of that, we're going to be removing these particular printers.
So it's going to be a slow process.
It's not, we're not taking them out now. Exactly.
As they go and die and.
Exactly.
And as we can build up this fleet, we'll get rid of the others.
Correct.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Gibbons.
Just one quick one. Does any of this fall under FFE, under the Clyde Brown project?
No, because the MSBA will not pay for anything that's a multi-year funding.
Got it.
And, and quite honestly, copiers are not something you want to buy. You don't want to own a copier.
Yep.
You want a leased copier.
Totally agree. Yep, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? I will take a motion. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Conroy.
I make a motion that we authorize the business manager to enter into a three-year lease with Toshiba with an amount not to exceed $25,860 and 96 cents annually.
A motion that moved and seconded. Any questions? Any comments? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Terry. Next is the consideration to reauthorize the full-day kindergarten sliding fee schedule as presented for the 2019-2020 year. We have a memo in our packets that outlines the sliding fee schedule. And it's from fiscal year 2016 to 2017. So obviously, this is dated, but if we authorize it, it will be updated.
Yeah, I think this is really mostly housekeeping. You did use this scale last year, but really, this is a sliding scale that if you're going to use it, we should update it, make it officially available for next year.
So it's not, go ahead, Mr. Conroy.
I move that the, we reauthorize the full-day kindergarten sliding fee scale as presented for the 2019-2020 school year.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded and we will update it and update it each year with the thing until we revote or have another vote. Okay. Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. And then lastly, on the action item, is a consideration of school meals collections. Mr. Wigan.
Yeah. Just to update you, I think in my memo, I said that currently, we have over 12,000 in unpaid meals. I apologize, that's incorrect. It's over 13,000 currently in unpaid meals. This is a, a letter and a process that I have used in the past successfully. I think it is a fair but firm process in getting collections from unpaid meals. And basically, it's a really kind of a, depending on how you look at it, a three or four-tier system. Okay? And it is a letter that I send out. I typically send these out initially to folks who are $50 or more at this point in time. And they have three options. One option is to pay in full within the time period, which is 30 days. The second option is to contact me in the 30 days and say, can we arrange a payment schedule? And I'm happy to do that. I have to limit the payment schedule, however, to 90 days simply because the federal rules say that after the end of the fiscal year, I only have 90 days to collect. That's why the 90 days is in there. But still, we can spread it out a little bit and hopefully help in that fashion. The third option is, we always include a free and reduced meal application. If they qualify for free and re, free or reduced, either one, we will forgive the debt and we will immediately put them, set them up on free and reduced. Now, I suppose there's a fourth option, they can ignore me. If they ignore me, we will send the debt to a collector and we will ask the collector to collect that debt. No, we will not collect the whole debt. Obviously, we only at that point in time get a percentage of the debt, but some of the money is better than none of the money. And I will tell you, my experience is, the first time these letters go out, there will be some angst. Over time, what happens is people get to understand the system and I'll be honest with you, I think after maybe the first 18 months of this, I rarely have to send somebody out to collection. Because they understand what the process is, they understand it's a fair process and typically speaking, they try to work with, with us and we with them because that's what we want to do. All right? We're not out to get anybody here. We simply, there's a bill that they owe and we want to have that paid because, you know, quite frankly, they owe it. So that's where the proposal is before you. I did mention that we're kind of maybe moving the cart a little bit ahead of the horse and then I've drafted a letter and I'm asking you to maybe, if you desire to give me some approval, move forward. I think at some point in time, I'd like to bring forward more formal policy to the policy committee and ultimately to the full committee to approve so that we get it on the books. But I do want to move forward so we can begin this collection process. And again, to remind the committee, if we don't collect this, you do have to pay it. That's the general rule.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead. So my first question is, I know we have policies in place with regards to other fees, so like athletic fee participation, graduate, like, does this fall in, is this already tied to any of those kind of elements of, and then, and then my other question is, how do we, so presumably, this 13,000 is all due this year?
Yes.
How do, how do we get to, some people being, like, how do you get there? How do we get to that? I mean, I just, I thought you reached a certain point, you have a, you know, you've got your card thing, and all of a sudden, they tell you, you can't buy ice cream anymore because you don't have the money on your account.
Well, I would say there's a couple of things that happen. Okay? First off, in today's day and age, in the, in the old days, when I started in this business, you could, you could basically say somebody no longer got a meal and you gave them an alternative meal. That is no longer something that can happen. Okay? So basically, they still get the normal meal. You're right, they theoretically cannot buy à la carte items. However, I will tell you that sometimes what happens, and again, sometimes, for example, you will have a parent who will give a child money to put on their account and, you know, children are creative and they will use that money and they will buy à la carte with the cash because they can do that, and yet, they still get the meal and that builds up their debt. So that is one thing that happens. Sometimes you just have folks that continue to build it up and frankly, we know people that intend to pay it off at the end of the year. Well, that's all well and good, except that right now, from my vantage point, I'm seeing several hundred dollars in some cases, okay, of these people, and I don't know that they're going to pay it off at the end of the year. So I need to look at it as this is a several hundred dollar debt that I need to have some action taken on now. Because I understand what they're maybe saying to different people, but from my standpoint, it's a debt that's gone out of control. I think there are some folks in Millis, just as there are in Georgetown, and there were in Concord, New Hampshire, and there were in Drake it, and there are in every school district in the country that are consistently exploit the system, to be honest with you. And while there are certain things that we can do to try and encourage them at the end of the year to pay off that debt, not all of those are going to be effective and/or they may be effective for one member of the family, but not necessarily all members of the family. So for example, there may be things that you can hold back from a graduating senior to get that money, but if there are three other siblings, you may not have done anything to affect the debt that those three other siblings have. So that's kind of the complexities of what we're looking at here.
So I will tell you that I, I want to collect this debt. I do have reservations and concerns about giving this to a debt collection. They are vicious and they hound and I, everyone should pay their debts. I pay my debts, I expect everyone to pay their debts, but it would be hard that this company, Company A is calling on behalf of the Millis Public Schools and you owe this money and they're going to call them nonstop. They can be very unscrupulous and I, I know we would look for the best company, but their, their tactics are very similar across the board. What if, what if we sent this letter and then reworded that last paragraph, if my office has not heard from you regarding disposition of the above-mentioned debt within the timeframe of 30 days? Ease up and I will be forced, we may, or give us some wiggle room that we may give it over to a debt collection and see what happens in the letters? I don't know what your experience has been, but I, that's my hesitation, is that they're, they're going to get hounded.
I'll be honest.
And maybe they should be hounded, I don't know, but I, I'm, I'm struggling with that.
I will, I understand and I will be honest, I've done this a number of ways. When I started doing this letter, we didn't, we didn't use a debt collection agency, I took them to small claims court.
I don't want to do that either.
I understand.
That's a good non-option that you put on the letter.
Believe me, believe me, I, I, those days are over, just like withholding a CDL, those days are over.
Okay.
Okay, but that, that certainly was, was one of the ways we started this. I certainly can make it more, more of an ambiguous threat, I guess. I will tell you that in the short run, okay, I will, I will absolutely freely admit this, in the short run, you may have a few people, and I, and I want to stress, a few people that may go to collection. In the long run, I'll be honest with you, a collection agency that you hook up with will probably call you, call me one day and say, I don't want to do business with you anymore because you're not giving me any business. And the reason that we're not giving them any business is because we drew a line in the sand at the beginning of this process. Now, I understand that's a tough thing for, for you, for the committee to grasp onto and say, yeah, but there's going to be some people at the beginning who are potentially going to get hounded by a collection agent.
But we're not, we're not Citibank. That's, there's my problem and how about we send the letter and see what comes back and see who has made no effort at all.
Okay.
I got you. Who has made no effort at all to contact you, to pay their debt, to offer up some sort of plan and then, then we can, we can always go to that.
Yes, we can.
I speak as one, there's, there's three others and Robin wants to.
So I looked up our policy on this as you were saying that and there's like steps in here. Are they being done, like the first, they are?
Yes.
And so it says like, they can only have two meals, then you have to contact their parents and then, like, it says here too, that in the middle of May, it's like, all charging is cut off and things like that and you have to request a payment in full and after once, like, are we doing all these things already to warrant, like, shouldn't, are you already be in contact with these families? Shouldn't they already be aware?
We contact them weekly.
Okay.
Yeah, we're contacting them weekly, but again, we're not going to deny a child food.
Sure, sure.
Yeah. And, and so that ends up still, you know, accumulating, accumulating a debt. And like I say, in the, in the old days, we would have done an alternative meal. We don't do alternative meals anymore for a variety of reasons, including the fact that the alternative meal wasn't necessarily particularly good meal. And we would prefer to give our children a meal that is healthy and because frankly, in most of these cases, you know, we're not after the children here.
No, sure, sure. But I was just wondering, like, where we were in the steps that have already been outlined here.
Actually, actually, I would have to say, Millis is one of the best districts I've ever seen about the weekly contact with, with these folks. It's really very good. You have a very good process here about the weekly contact. It's, and, and again, you happen to have, and you're not alone with this. I mean, this is happening with districts all across the country, but there are some heavy hitters and this is the group that we're really targeting here.
So 10% of our district owes $1,000 apiece. I know that's not exactly how it plans out.
There are, there are folks that, yes, they're individuals.
So maybe, so maybe I'm.
A thousand or more, yes.
10%?
Meaning there's 1,500 kids in the district?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, okay, so that's more closer to the 10%. That's, we're, I'm trying to look at 13,000.
But that's only 13 out of.
Oh, that's, it's, nevermind, nevermind.
I was trying to make a point.
I don't know, maybe, maybe I'm, maybe I'm just reacting to the, if we've, if we've made attempts.
I just, I had to say, same initial reaction. I read the, so I happened to just, as I was going through the packet, I happened to just read the letter first and then I read your memo. And especially hearing that we've been in touch with these, these families every week leading up to this, I don't know what other option that we have. Do I like it? I don't, but I think if we've gone through all of that, we've continued to make these outreaches to the families.
I know, I understand, I understand.
I mean, we could certainly do it as a two-step process. I, I think, will it be as effective? I think ultimately, if at some point in time, we have a hammer that we come down with, it.
I don't want to stop, I don't want to stop the process. We need to get our money. I just, I'm reacting, I'm just being honest.
And again, trust me, I, this is, your reaction is very similar to probably every other school board and school committee that I've ever brought this forward to and I completely understand it. But one of the things it does is it does send a message that, you know, we, we provide a service with these meals. It costs money to provide these meals.
Yes.
And consequently, if your child is going to participate in the program, you know, we need you to meet your side of the obligation.
Mr. Chair, if I may, also, in terms of the people hours that I've spent chasing debt in the district, it's tremendous. It's not a pleasant process for those phone calls you've heard in meetings with secretaries that it's awkward, it's difficult, and it takes up a tremendous amount of time in all the school buildings and in central office. So it is truly a last resort for the district.
I understand that, I understand that. I just, I would entertain a motion.
Wondering if the word forced in the.
I didn't, I didn't like forced. May.
Is the word, that, that's the word that jumps out at me as the.
I may or I will or I, yeah, forced is, because nothing's forcing you.
I will need to, I like, yes. Yes. It sounds much more.
I can live with that.
It sounds better.
Yeah.
And then they're going to call your house.
Need to.
Four thousand times.
But, but, right, yeah, I mean.
But somebody in Millis has called their house 4,000 times.
Right.
They're calling them every week. So somebody is already making that outreach and it's a staff member that's putting that operational cost there, so.
I, I get it. I'm with you, you don't have to convince me.
Okay.
I've moved into the middle.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Conroy.
I authorize the business manager to, or I make a motion, we authorize the business manager to proceed with the food service debt collection letter as amended.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Terry.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Sure.
Next on the agenda is time and learning. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Oh, wait.
Teacher rep, please.
Right, need to be heard.
All schools will have spring break next week. Starts this Saturday and it will continue through April 21st and resume school on April 22nd. The Clyde Brown would like to thank the teachers and members of the community that participated in their Community Giveaway Day. They are glad that the great response to give homes to gently-used items was successful. On Monday, April 8th, Kyle Dine performed an allergy awareness presentation with humor and music for students to gain further understanding about the risks of allergies. On Tuesday, April 9th, Clyde Brown will be having a Red Sox spirit day to celebrate the season opener. And Tuesday, April 9th, Clyde Brown also was hosting an art show from 5:00 to 7:00 PM in the evening. The ELA and CAS states for grade four are April 9th and 10th, grade three are April 23rd and April 24th. And April 29th will be an all-school assembly featuring the annual teacher plays where teachers will be performing tales for the students. Boosterathon is coming May 24th. More details about this great fundraiser will be coming soon. In the middle school, the 10th grade wax museum was held in the gym this past Friday. The 5th grade did an excellent job with their biographical presentations. In the high school, there are four scholarships from the Metro West Chamber of Commerce that are still available in the high school counseling office and students should check the scholarship basket for applications. Those deadlines are by April 15th. There is a trip to Costa Rica that leaves this Friday and a trip to the devils leaves Thursday evening and there'll be students attending both those trips. Mr. Fallon will be taking his sophomores to the World War II International Museum in Natick this Thursday, April 11th. It's a. It's an incredible display of artifacts from every aspect of World War II.
Thank you, Drew.
So prom tickets started to be sold this week, and senior projects are continuing to be worked on. The rough draft for the final paper is due April 12th. Seniors are continuing to commit to colleges, and spring sports are now in full swing.
Any commitments that we should be aware of on the committee?
Yeah, I just committed to Mass Maritime.
Excellent. Congratulations.
Excellent. That's awesome, Drew. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Anything else on your announcements?
Nope, that's it.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right, next is time and learning, and this will be the guidance report with the 21st Century Careers Initiative. Favorite presentation. Some people like opening day, some people like the Macy's Day Parade. He's not even listening. Whatever works for you guys. Mark, we equate, Mr. Ardicky, I should say, we equated this to either opening day or the Macy's Day Thanksgiving Parade. This is that, that kind of day for certain people. They are not doing well. October may not be an issue. We may not have to worry about October plans. This will go much better.
Hey, good evening.
Good evening.
We are the Milis High School Counseling Department. I'm Riley Dunn. This is Mark Ardicky. And Amy Day is our 21st Century Careers Coordinator this year. And tonight, we are here to talk about the class of 2018, a profile of their testing and placement. So before we get into, of course, the class of 2018 is last year's graduating class, we wanted to give a quick update on, wanted to give a quick update on how our, how this year's seniors are doing and where they are in their college application process right now. So almost all our seniors at this point have heard back from their colleges. So we have a list of some of the class of 2019 acceptances. We have obviously a, a variety of schools up there, everywhere from University of Maryland to more local schools like Endicott. We have a student accepted to Yale this year, a student accepted to the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, which hasn't happened in a while. It's a very difficult school to get into. William &amp; Mary, a lot of great schools, so. They all will need to decide where they're going to go by May 1st. So right now, a lot of them are making visits to colleges, looking at their financial aid packages, and so we are, you know, trying to help them as best we can with those decisions, as they are huge decisions. Also, just some updates on what we have been, you know, busy with these last few weeks, and some things that we have coming up. At this point, we have finished two rounds of our freshman seminars, and we have finished our sophomore seminars and our junior seminars. And last year, we talked a lot about what we did each of those years. Just kind of as a reminder, in freshman year, we're really focusing on making the most out of your four years of high school, while also keeping in mind that your future goals and career aspirations, and kind of help, helping all students to stay on track for those goals. Sophomore year, we do a, it's very career focused, and we, we talk to the kids about their Myers-Briggs personality inventories. We talk about all the different factors that people should consider before choosing a career. So we have a lot of fun with that. And then in 11th grade, again, it's very career focused and future focused, but it's definitely more focused on that college application process as our juniors really have to get the ball rolling on that. So we will have another round of freshman seminars, but we are done with the sophomores and, and junior seminars. We had our juniors, junior student and parent college planning night in February, where we had UMass, UMass Amherst, Boston College, Mass Bay Community College, Salve Regina, and Suffolk University. They did, we, together with them, did a panel presentation on the college application process for our junior students and parents. On March 6th, we had our third Small School Big Future Conference, which again, we had about 50 professionals from Milis and, and surrounding communities coming in to meet with our students. And some of them were just in our career fair, just to talk about what they do for work and kind of how they got to where they are, where others were giving seminars in classrooms. And we had everything from persevering through hard times to, you know, preparing for and giving presentations to, um, sorry, I lost my train of thought. We had a number of seminars in the classrooms that students were able to choose which seminars they wanted to attend that day. And we had a great keynote about finding happiness in life. So that was a great success, and we, when we did our end-of-the-day survey, 93% of our students reported that they felt they learned something useful that day. So we're, we're excited about those results again. This year, we did something a little bit different for our college fair. In the past, we've had our college fair right here in the cafeteria. And then all the college reps kind of pack up and quickly rush over to Medway High School to do a college fair there. So we partner with them in planning it. And this year, we talked with the Medway counselors and realized that because we have a smaller cafeteria, we were kind of limiting both of the schools by not only being able to fit 30 schools in our cafeteria. So this year, Medway hosted the college fair, and they were able to fit almost 50 schools in their cafeteria. So it broadened the range, and we just had to take a quick bus trip with our juniors over to Medway. And almost all of our juniors were able to go with us, so that was great. We also, just last week, had our eighth to ninth grades step-up night, just to kind of explain the differences between high school and middle school to our rising eighth graders. And we also recently completed the Signs of Suicide program with our ninth grade students in their health classes. This week and last week, we have been working really hard on scheduling with all of our students. So we sit down with all of our students, grades one-on-one, grades nine through 11, and make sure that they are choosing the appropriate classes for the next year to keep them on track for their goals. So it's been a busy week, a couple of weeks with that. And we do have the local scholarships, applications available online, and we facilitate that process with our seniors. And in the next few weeks, we are going to work with our seniors and meet with them a few more times so that we can make sure that we are supporting them on their transition out of Milis High School. So a lot going on. Back to the class of 2018, last year's graduating class. 90% of the class attended four-year colleges, which is actually the highest percentage on record. 95% continued, plan to continue formal education in some sort, again, the highest on record. So we're excited to see that. And that's on trend, really, with 88% or more of the class has moved on to some sort of continuing education in each of the last 20 years. We looked at the Barren's ranking of competitiveness of admissions for 2019. And really, the trends were similar to previous years, with 53% of all of the acceptances fell into one of the top three categories, most competitive, highly competitive, and very competitive. 5% of all acceptances fell into the highest category. 12% were in the second highest. And 36% were in very competitive, and 36% were in the competitive. So, you know, a slight, slight difference, but really kind of similar results to last year's class in terms of those rankings. There was a bit of a change in geographical placement this year. So for all the students going to college, we had 75% of them chose classes in, chose colleges in New England, so 25% of them chose schools outside of New England, which was definitely an increase from the 10% of students who left New England the previous year. So we had students, you know, obviously, we still had a lot of students in New England, but it, we, our schools ranged from the Midwest to the South, to all the way to California, Montana, and Washington. So kind of cool to see them branching out a little bit, and it'll be interesting to see if that trend continues. Okay, so for the SAT, this was the second class to take the redesigned SAT. So sadly, we can't look back on 10 years' worth of trends. But yeah, so we can compare it to last year's class. Again, this SAT is out of 1,600, and there are two sections, the evidence-based reading and writing, and the math with an optional essay. 93% of the graduating class of 2018 took the SAT, and the mean score was 11.10, which was down 30% from, 30%, 30 points from the class of 2017. And we were below the Massachusetts mean by a little bit and above the national mean. For the evident, evidence-based reading and writing section, our mean score was 5.70, which was above the Massachusetts mean and the national mean. And then our math score was a mean score of 5.40, slightly down from the class of 2017, and slightly below that Massachusetts mean, but above the national mean. And when looking at the DART schools, these are 10, they compare Milis to 10 other schools that are like Milis. I think you guys have a list of those schools in your report. And compared to those other schools, we were the 10th highest overall SAT score at 11.10. For evidence-based reading and writing, we were the seventh highest, and for math, we were the 10th highest. We did have the third smallest overall number of test takers in the entire DART group with 100 students.
Riley, how many, how many students were in the class last year of the 100? So how many were there? 120? One?
No, like 107, I think we were last year.
So almost everyone?
Yeah, just about.
Okay.
Yeah, it was 93% of the class that took. So for our SAT subject test participation rates, these are continuing to decline, and that's really because very few colleges require SAT subject tests, or even want to see them at all. So there's, for the most part, for most students, there's not really any reason to take the SAT subject tests. But we did have a few students who took them. 6% of those students took the SAT subject tests. And there's a list of the different subjects that they took them in. All right, and for the ACT, the ACT, of course, is the other college entrance exam. The highest possible score for the ACT is a 36. And our scores for the class of 2018 were comparable to the previous year, but they did go down slightly. So the average composite score was a 24.1, which was down a bit for the class of 2017. But it was the fifth highest composite score on record from Milis High School. And we did see slight drops in all four subject areas. Not huge drops, small ones, but it did drop for each subject area. And then we were below the state composite average and above the national composite average for the 12th straight year. Massachusetts students rank second nationally on the ACT, which is also, I think, in part because fewer students in Massachusetts take the ACT than they do in other states. So typically, it's some of the strongest students in Massachusetts that take the ACT in addition to the SAT or incentive. All right, so at this point, I will hand it over to Mark. He can talk about AP scores.
So we'll shift a little bit, just from the, say, with the college board, moving on from ACT, but talk a little bit about AP scores. So, you know, I think as you guys know here, we have a lot of students involved in our AP classes, which is awesome. We offer a lot of access to the students. What's really impressive about the access is what our teachers are doing with the kids and what the kids are doing to earn the scores that they are, because you're going to see from last year, they were pretty impressive. So we had 14 different AP exams taken last school year. Overall, we had 62% of the senior class that participated in an AP exam at some point over their high school careers, which is a 5% increase, I think, from the previous class. There were 11 classes that were taught in the building. Those three other exams that we had were done through the Virtual High School or the Education Cooperative. So in 10 of those 11 exams taken at the school, 70% scored a three or better, which is, I think, incredibly impressive. Six of those 11 exams saw at least 80% score a three or higher, and three of those exams had 90% or more of the kids score a three or better. That includes English language, human geography, and Spanish language. And if you, and again, if you want to see something incredibly impressive, our Spanish language exam, which is not all Spanish immersion students, it's probably about half and half last year, all 38 kids scored a three or higher. That's 38, out of 38 of, we had 107 kids in our senior class. I think we had two juniors taking it. So that's 36 kids in the senior class out of 107 that took AP Spanish language and scored a three or higher. So I think that's incredible. And then you can see English language was at 94%, and then human geography was at 92. So those were our, our top three of all the AP scores. If we look overall, we had 184 exams taken by 111 students. I'll show you the trend graph in a second, but you can see that the trends moved a little bit higher last year. That was an increase from 175 exams by 102 students the year before. So we added nine students and nine exams. 80% overall scores earned a three or higher. It was 75% the year before, so 5% higher. It actually ended up ranking 54th in the entire state in the number of AP exams that we had scoring three or higher, which is impressive. 42% were four or better. That was up 11% from 2017, again, with more kids, more exams. And 15% scored a five, which is the highest possible score. That was up 5% from the previous year. So, I mean, all those trends are, I think, incredible. Talk a lot about the kids and the teachers and what they're doing in those classes. If you look overall, this was something actually that Paul Meliney, our principal, had, had, had done some research on and found. If you look overall at our AP, so our performance last year, you can see 80% were three or higher. The state average was about 65.9% were three or higher. So we were above the state in that. And then on that, we, we looked at the, our like advanced class participation scale. That's inclusive of APs. And for us, with advanced classes, also includes like calculus and pre-calculus. Those are the two that really jump out. Other than APs, they use international baccalaureate classes, which we don't have. But in that, we had an 80, 80.5% participation in those advanced classes, which is inclusive of APs, and like I said, calc and pre-calc. And the state was 65.5%. We were 70th in the state in that participation, and we were 54th, 54th in the state in straight AP performance. And I think what Bob had found, and we looked at, that was kind of impressive. If you look at those two statistics, so thinking that we're up above 80% in our performance and 80% in our participation, there were only 20 other schools in the state that were in that realm, and we were amongst those 20s. You know, we were, we were right in that, right in that mix with those 20 schools that I have listed up there for you. You know, and I think if you're, if you're looking at that list, there's some schools that you typically think is your higher-powered schools. So I think for us to, to fit in that mix there, and I think Bob had said the other night at our grade eight step-up nights, there are a few W schools in that mix too, so it was kind of nice to be inclusive with that group. But thought that was a pretty impressive statistic to show you guys. That's our participation rate. So you can see from, from, probably from 2013, we've really kind of continued to climb, both with number of students participating and number of exams that kids are taking. Next year, when we come in and present, you'll see from, from this year that we're, it's going to be the same. We'll have a slight increase both in the number of exams and the number of students. I don't know where that trend will go the following year, but I know going into next year, at least, you're going to see that that number is up still. So we're offering, you know, a lot of access. We've added AP Human Geography la, to, this was the second year that we've taught it, the third year this year that we've had Human Geography. Last year, we added AP Computer Science Principles, and also last year, we added AP US Government and Politics. So we've increased the offerings to the kids a little bit, and they seem to be jumping on board and performing along with.
What is human geography?
So it is, it's really like Steve Bigelow, who teaches the class, would give you a dissertation on this because he's so excited about it. But they really talk about like how populations settled in the world, what, what produce, what they use for, what their domestic product is, why it, why it is that, why they settled in certain areas. It's really a study of like globally, why, you know, why the cultures are, how they are, and where they ended up. And it's, so it's a pretty unique, and, and.
Sounds interesting.
It's a unique interest, I think. Yeah, and we, we have a lot of kids that are interested for it next year, too. So he's doing a good, Steve Bigelow's doing a good sell on it, I can tell you that for sure. So there's participation. Mean grades, 10 of the 11 exams from classes that were taught here at the high school had mean grades of three or above. had mean grades of three or above. So again, pretty impressive stats. And the mean grades were higher than the state in seven of the eleven exams that were taught here at the high school. And I won't go over the list, but you can see the list of the schools that are up there, a list of exams that are up there. For AP Scholars, so there's a based on earnings, certain scores as you go through your AP exams, being three or higher and on a certain number of exams. Thirty percent of the overall group were named AP Scholars. That was the largest number that we've ever had. Also, it's the largest number of exams we've ever had, too. But kids are still performing admirably on those exams. Three earned AP Scholar with Distinction, one of the higher honors you can get. Seven were AP Scholars with Honors, and sixteen were straight AP Scholar Awards. So again, impressive and great recognition for our kids. If, in comparison to the DART schools, and I think this probably speaks to the slide that I showed before as to where we kind of sit in the mix of schools, not just in DART, but in the state. We were the third highest percentage of, of exam scoring, three or above at eighty percent. The only two schools above us were Dover Sherburne at ninety-three and Georgetown was at ninety-one percent. So we were third on that list. So I think in general, you can just see if we're looking at our AP scores from last year, like incredibly professive, incredibly impressive. Spanish immersion, we always talk about this when we come into, as part of the report. We had fifteen immersion kids, and I think I'd said to you, like, that AP Spanish class year had thirty-eight kids in it. Two of them were immersion kids that were actually juniors last year, just by chance of how it happened. So it was actually more than half of those kids that scored that three or higher were not immersion kids. So that says a lot about our language program, too. Overall, Spanish immersion GPA was a three-nine-seven, so slightly above the class average, which is the three-four-five. A hundred percent of the students in Spanish immersion program went off to four-year college. I mean, it was ninety percent of the class, based on what we told you guys a little earlier. A hundred percent of the Spanish immersion, Spanish immersion class did take the SAT. Their scores were a little bit higher than the class in, on the whole. So five-ninety to five-seventy on the evidence-based reading and writing and five-fifty-three to five-forty on the math. Overall, mean score was thirty-three point higher than the overall class for Spanish immersion students. And then there's just a look at the scores on the AP exams for the Spanish immersion kids. You had five, six-fives, eight-fours, and then one-three. And I know we've talked about this every year we come in, but three's basically considered the passing score. So that's, so those are really the statistics that I have for you to go through. And I know the reports, I know the report is a little lengthy and I'm sure very exciting to get through. As much as it is, is we're proofreading it in the office. And you have to ply everybody with coffee while we're in there. But, but there's a lot of great info in there. I just kind of, we just, we just kind of tried to highlight the things that we thought were good for you guys to see in the report and for everybody to hear about. In summary, just to kind of throw some of the things from the report together and just talk a little bit about some of us departmentally. The number of kids moving on to higher ed continues to be large here at the high school. I anticipate this year that it'll be somewhere probably with, with four-year colleges. I think probably somewhere between eighty-five and ninety percent again will be it. You know, and kids are looking for the right fit. And like, as you saw there, there's acceptances all over the place. Where everybody will land, I don't know. You know, there are some kids talking now about going further away. And then as we're getting closer to the middle of April, they're like, I don't know if I'm going to go as far away. So we'll see where they all end up in the next couple of weeks. That May first National Candidate Deadline is exciting around here, I think, for all the kids. So everybody's really excited to do that and to start to put their stuff on the bulletin board outside the counseling office and let everybody know where they're going. Competitive acceptances, like Riley talked about, fairly steady from last year, pretty much exactly the same numbers. We surveyed the class of two thousand eighteen around graduation time to ask them some different things. Just a few of the highlights that I pulled out for you. Ninety-one and a half percent has said that they were admitted to one of their three top choice schools. So we, we think that the kids, and we're working with the kids, and they're doing a good job of picking schools that really meet and match the fit for them, which is awesome. It was eighty-five percent the year before, so fairly steady, but a good number. Financial aid continues to be a factor for almost sixty percent of our kids as it was the year before. And I, and we've heard that multiple times from kids this year. You know, I actually had a kid the other day that told me that they had a, a financial aid package from a school where they had earned a merit scholarship. I'm not going to say the school or the kid, but they had had a merit scholarship from the school that was twenty-five thousand dollars a year. And I was like, wow, I said, that's amazing. And the kid was like, yeah, it is, except that the school's seventy-five. And that's about what I got. So, so you, you know, so the financial aid piece of it, even though is, you know, and I think I have twins that are seven-year-old, I don't know how on earth this is going to happen. So I'll probably be working in Millis among about a hundred and fifteen. So anyway, so just to kind of give you some perspective on that. And we've surveyed our kids to just kind of ask what their overall satisfaction was with their high school plan. It was a four-point-three out of five from the entire class that we surveyed last year. We'd love to get that as high as possible, but I think that that's a pretty good, a pretty good number. Again, we talked about the AP exams, you know, I could go on about that, but I think those, the exam scores are very impressive. And to think that we sat at fifty-fourth in the state overall was, was pretty, with eighty percent or higher, was pretty amazing. We'll have more, you know, the SAT comparison data is coming as we keep moving along here with the new SAT. And then again, to talk about just us a little bit. Departmentally, we surveyed the kid to see what, kids to see what their satisfaction was with school counseling services and was a four-point-three out of five. So we'd love for that to be a five. That's our goal every year. But four-point-three out of five was pretty good. So we thank you every year for allowing us the opportunity to come in here and do this. We're sorry we ran it a little earlier this year, but I know the schedule's been kind of busy. So hopefully next year, we're with you guys a little bit earlier and have the opportunity to share, you know, all the great stuff that our kids are doing and that our teachers and faculty and staff and admins are doing to guide us along the way. But we appreciate it.
So we, we appreciate you being here. We've been busy, but you getting kids ready for, for school and post-high school is probably much more important than coming here on a Tuesday night and presenting. I do have a question, and it was on Riley's part. On the SAT scores DART comparison, it says that we had the tenth highest overall SAT score. So is that two out of the eleven or are we ten out of?
It's ten out of the eleven.
So we were ten out of the eleven. So we were ten out of eleven on the SATs. But then when you look at our AP scores, and we're number two. So I didn't know if I was reading that wrong and we were number two in both places. Do you have any idea how, how that could happen? I mean, obviously, the APs is very, very impressive. And maybe the SATs are really kind of out of the district's hands, right?
Well, it's, it's a tougher, I mean, because they are, they are two, I mean, they're very different exams, right? So you're, you know, you're, the SAT is that evidence-based reading and writing and math. Math's mostly a conglomeration of algebra. They use, it's called like Heart of Algebra is the majority of that test. The evidence-based reading and writing is a lot more like passage-based, inference-based material now than it was before. They don't, that's shifted. But that's kind of like, what we're trying to figure out is that's a lot of like aggregate learning. And it's, and, and I don't know what the correlation is between, you know, what we're doing in classes that lead us toward, you know, meeting the standards and all that versus teaching towards the SAT test. You know, we, we've talked to, said the English teachers and the math teachers, and I know that they're making a conscious effort to start to, not start because they've been doing it, but introduce more SAT-based type questions in class and have some of those discussions without taking away exactly from the things that they're doing in the classroom, too. You know, I was actually just talking to one of the math teachers today, and she was talking about like trying to start including more like SAT-type math questions on some of their assessments that they do, just to give the kids continued exposure as they go along.
That just, it jumps out.
It does, yeah. And, and, but, but the other part of it is that with the AP exams, you're spending an entire year immersed in that subject, you know. So everything that you do, whether it's biology, human geography, computer science, English Language, English Literature, your whole year is spent focusing not just on the content of the AP class, but the preparation for the test. So those kids really have a whole year to prep for that test as opposed to, you know, we don't, we don't have like a specific SAT prep class or something like that. You just rely on what the kids are taking in, you know, from those. And the exams are a little bit different. You know, they're both timed exams, but, you know, I think it's something that we're working on. We've tried to introduce a couple of other things, like we have PSATs for our juniors. We have a pre-ACT for our sophomores that we started two years ago to try to give them a little more exposure to the timed testing. So, you know, we're trying to do some different things to get them there. And I think every class is different, too.
It was more of just a question. It wasn't, it just kind of jumped out.
Mr. Chair, I had the same question. And actually, as you guys were talking, I was looking in the report. And the DART schools that we're typically used to seeing are different than the DART schools that these are going through. So if I may.
Yeah, thank you. That's a good point.
No, absolutely. Well, I was surprised because originally, the earlier, the earlier, the first slide that referenced DART, I was reading that and I was surprised by where it sat. But then the second slide that referenced DART, referenced Dover Sherburne, who's not usually in our DART group. So, so for the measurement on these, it is Dover Sherburne, Georgetown, King Philip, Manchester Essex, Medway, Millis, Old Rochester, Pembroke, Situate, Tinsborough, and West Bridgewater. That's a very different DART list than what we've seen in the past. So being, you know, what, eleven on twelve or ten out of eleven?
We've seen a couple of them before. We've seen Georgetown and Old Rochester, but most of them are now.
Yep, but not Medway, not Situate, not Dover Sherburne, not King Philip, like, so it's, it's different, it's really different. So just from our perspective, so that you guys know, like, being whatever, ten out of eleven on that list is very different than being ten of eleven on, out of what I would consider the typical DART list that we've seen. So just for us to be aware of that.
It's a good, it's actually, we were actually just talking about that before we came in. We were looking at that list of schools, like I, I don't want to argue with Desi's DART system, but it was a little.
They're watching, so do.
I don't want to get caught.
I do believe they changed it so it's more focused on small-size districts versus, in the past, they used to have a more similar demographic financially, two percent of low-income students, et cetera. So I have a quick question on the, are, are we using the practice tests that the College Board, after they take their SATs, they give students access to practice questions, et cetera? And I know, having a junior myself, there seem, among her friends, when I talk to them, a very large number of students in her, that I'm aware of, are utilizing private tutors. And they go, they're doing a lot for pay, you know, pay, paying services for services that I think a lot of kids just utilize the free Khan Academy. So I think there's, there is a difference of, in wealthier communities, what families are able to pay for those high-level tutoring, individualized services.
Yeah, I think if you were to look at, if you were to talk to probably a few of the districts that were on there, you'd probably find that like more than fifty percent of their kids are probably taking some sort of a prep class or doing some prep tutoring. We're here, you know, we did, we did survey this last year. I can't remember what the number was, but the percentage of kids that we have that are doing that is not great. It's not. I mean, those, those classes can cost anywhere from like five hundred to two thousand dollars. If you're doing private tutoring, it's probably more than a thousand dollars. So it's, it's expensive. So, you know, I think that is another part of it, too. I would definitely agree with that.
And you're right that all students have access to the free online prep through College Board partnering with Khan Academy. And if they take the PSAT, they have personalized prep. So it tells them what their strengths are and things to work on. And we'll give them problems to work on according to what they need to work on. So that's available to them. I think it is hard for them to like, you know, make the time to sit down and get it done when there's not somebody that's getting paid to help, help them through it. So it's tough. We do encourage them to try and take advantage of that because it's pretty awesome, but it's hard.
Did you say?
I have a question. So I was just wondering if you guys keep track or find out of the kids that decide not to go to a four-year college or to do a gap year. Do you kind of keep track of them and see what they do after? Like, do kids come back and say, oh, I need my stuff to go, you know, after my gap year, I'm going to apply and, and things like that? I was just curious, like where they go if they're not doing that, if we check that.
I think anecdotally, we do a little bit because we are so small.
Yeah, sure.
You find out what everybody's doing, you know, specifically with like outreach, we do as much. Some of the kids will come back to us, you know, I know just last week, we have a kid who just spent two years in Mass Bay and is now going to go off to a four-year institution. You know, we've had kids that will get back in touch with us afterwards and say that they're sending applications out. We just had another student who was applying to another state college in Massachusetts who actually was graduated like four or five years ago and was trying to figure out a plan. So they, they do. We don't necessarily track them that way. There is, the Department of Education, we've talked about this with, with Bob, is that there's a, there is now the opportunity to be able to pull some clearinghouse data that we didn't have access to without cost in the past to see like where the, what kids are doing at four-year colleges, where they're staying, graduation rates, all that kind of stuff. So we are going to start to look at that data a little bit. It wasn't always great because it didn't include all, all the schools that kids were going off to. And I, I know in talking to the guidance directors in the area, they didn't love the data because sometimes some of the bigger institutions that their kids were going off to weren't included. So it wasn't really a great representation of really how kids were, if they were graduating in four years, where they were going, like all that kind of stuff. But we're going to start to look at some of that data, too, to see if we can see that. So not only just the kids that are going off to college, but we do kind of anecdotally keep in touch with the kids that aren't. And they know the door is always open here, too. We will have kids that come back, you know, all the time. And I can think of, I think of one of the kids that comes back like fairly regularly now and is like, geez, high school wasn't as bad as I thought it was. And is still like, I wish I could come back. And I'm like, no, you can't come back. But, but it's great to have him like still feel that connection to come back in. And we're, we're there if they need help and support to try to figure things out down the road. Like, I've run into a lingering here right now, you know, and she was our teacher rep at one of our special educators. And she has kids that'll still contact her that have graduated a couple of years ago that are still asking questions and, and seeking out information. So I think we have that, but we don't specifically like go out and track them on that afterwards. Yeah.
Yes.
A question I have about data, but are we seeing trends in what our kids are interested in? What they're looking to go study? And are there things that, that we should be looking at? Maybe trying to bring in more of? So if there's higher interest, either we don't have it at all and we're seeing kids interested in it and we should try and break some of it in. Or we have some, but this seems to be something that's really catching on and is going that we should be focused on.
I mean, it's hard to say because, I mean, I've only worked here for five, this is my fifth year. So I don't really know how it's compared to the past. I mean, there's definitely some popular trends, like healthcare is huge, nursing and all those things. And then engineering is also growing big time. And we've done, through planning for the conference, we've done a lot of surveys of the students to the types of things that they're interested in. So we can definitely see the more popular answers for that. And then, and that's kind of like where we all work together, but Amy's focusing on like making connections. Where, where are those areas of need and where, how can we connect kids to those opportunities or bring, bring more of those opportunities to the school for them? And I will touch on that. I have, yeah, something I'm trying to do monthly to touch base with the students and see what they're interested in because I try to get the message across that I'm really here for them. And, you know, if they have a career that they're interested in, I can go out and try and make that connection and give them that opportunity.
Yeah, and I think we have, you know, we still have kids that are looking to go a lot track. We have kids that are looking to become like PAs, PTs, nursing. There are some kids in engineering and science fields. I think what we're trying to do and we're showing them in like seminars and stuff is trying to connect them into the careers that are going to be there for them in the future. So, you know, like when we go off to like college visits and we, and we talk to different people at schools and talk about some of the departments, you know, like we, we were just at Roger Williams a little while ago and they were talking about like construction management and what a growing field it is that they're building a new, a brand-new building there. We had somebody in for the career fair that was talking to us about people that have come out of construction management who are like out of college or sometimes coming in and making like a hundred thousand dollars a year. So if that's something that's of an interest to someone, like at least we have a little, you know, like we have more knowledge of that now, cybersecurity, like there's a lot of like growing programs and fields that are out there.
Media influencers, which I'm trying to get my head around.
Yeah. So I mean, so we're, we're trying to adapt like how we present our curriculum to the kids, too, so that we can open their eyes to some different things and try to work with Amy a little bit to kind of throw those things out there, too. But you still see a lot of like the kids heading out in the traditional way. And honestly, the other part of it, too, is like we have a lot of kids now, and the colleges would tell you this on the whole, that are moving out undecided. We have more kids than ever that are applying undecided because they're not a hundred percent sure. And when kids are going off to college now, they're changing majors sometimes at college, two or three times before graduation. So they haven't necessarily quite found exactly what that niche is going to be. So I think we're trying to do a, you know, a better job of like really promoting to them like the potential opportunities that are out there and like where that could possibly be. But we still see a lot of the traditional things that the kids are looking. and like where that could possibly be. But we still see a lot of the traditional things that the kids are looking at that are kind of looking in that window. But it is amazing when we look at our list of students, and we'll do that when we survey everybody, how many like undecideds you'll see on that. And I have a feeling we're going to see that again this year. Even some of the kids that have picked something are like, I'm not sure. You know, and honestly, at 18, I don't know. I don't know if you necessarily have to be, you know.
Anyone else?
I think that's a great segue to Amy's person of the.
Yes, unplug for you.
Mine's very great, so. My name is Amy Daye, and I started as the 21st Century Careers Coordinator in November. I have been with the Millis Public Schools for about 15 years, working at Clyde Brown in Special Education. But this is my first time working with the high school. And I can't say enough about working for Bob and with Mark and Riley. They've been a fantastic team, very supportive and encouraging and answering my millions of questions. All right. So one of the first kind of areas that I was trying to kind of look at was, you know, instead of jumping in with internships, get, start to get my feet wet and get, just get kids out in the community, getting into careers, things like that. All right. So one of the first kind of things was to try and make some partnerships in the community and get some students out on field trips. One of the first things I, I tried to set up was a police station visit, which we did just recently on the 26th of March. We had tried several times, but between the weather, we had to cancel, and the Super Bowl, they had to do security. So we finally got there. And we talked about options for career in law enforcement, different specialties within law enforcement, duties in rank, the hiring process. We met with Chief of Police Christopher, and he was great and really, you know, talked about, really personalize it to Millis and, you know, what he looks for and ways to move up in, in, within, within the, within the force rating in Millis, which I thought was really great. The next thing we have is this wonderful opportunity we got through Adessa. They're having an industry day. They're actually providing a bus, picking us up, and providing lunch. And they're going to have a career fair. And it encompasses not just, I don't know if you're familiar with Adessa, the car auction in Framingham, but they also include marketing, sales, accounting, because they also do the loan aspect of the, of the cars. So right now, we have some interests. I have a couple of students at, at this moment signed up. So I'm pretty excited to do that in a couple of weeks. Also, I've met with Fire Chief Rick Barrett, and he wants to partner with us to do a junior fire service program, hopefully to start next year. And it's a really fabulous program. He actually has the curriculum already that other towns have used. And it has a lab and classroom component. And it also would include community engagement and service. So they would do some service hours in the community. The wonderful thing about the program is after they complete it, it's about, ideally, it would be over two years and they would meet about two, two to three times a week. So we're just trying to figure out the scheduling. But they, after completing the program, ideally for a junior, senior, they could sit for the basic EMT exam and be qualified. There might be a little bit more after, but to actually go to the firefighter academy and, except for the exam. So it's a really, for, for students that are interested in this path, it's a fabulous program because, I mean, they're going to be going through a lot of the training within, still in high school. So the other thing I've kind of started is a monthly snack break. I'm trying to engage students in any way I can. I find that nut-free candy and goldfish really help. So I kind of call it my personalized learning opportunity. And I just kind of get kids to come over to me and talk about what they, opportunities that we have already available to them and also things that are interesting to them. One of the, this board that I kind of took a quick picture of was right before the career fair. And I said, just write down what you want to know about, you know, think broad about, you know, a career you want to go into, something you want to know before you get out of high school, and just write on a sticky note, just very random. And kids were putting up all kinds of stuff, but it was really interesting. I mean, everything from careers and, but also like cooking a meal, things that, you know, we kind of take for granted that some real, true, real-life skills that they need. So we tried to, you know, one of the things that coming up was a interior designer. And we were all like, who's an interior designer? And I realized that we had a teacher last year that actually left to open her own business in interior design. So Liz Shea actually came back and was at our career fair, and it was a huge hit because there was several students that were interested in going into that. So that, that really worked out really well. So I've kind of tried to make that more of a monthly opportunity to go and, and just see, to let kids know that I'm here and that I can really, what they're interested in, I can try and go. Another thing that's come up is nursing. So I've attempted to try and go out and go in, to just kind of do a field, site visit, but going into medical field with HIPAA regulations, it's just really difficult with the privacy laws. So I have partnered with a UMass Boston professor, Dr. Mary Lee of Docamoff, to come in and discuss various pathways to becoming a nurse. I've also talked to a few nurses in the community. I'd like to have a panel with, you know, with, you know, ED nurse, different areas of nursing to talk about, you know, what, what the job looks like. So I thought that would probably be easier for the students. So that's going to happen probably around the first week of May. I'm just working out the schedule. So let's see. Also, I wanted to add, share some pictures. There were some fabulous pictures from our Small School Big Future Conference on the 6th of March. So that, I.
Do you remember the keynote?
Ron Debona. Ron Debona. So just some pictures of some of the things that the kids engaged. We'd had, one of the, um, one of them had brought in virtual reality. I think, yeah, it was really cool. It was, I think he was the architect. Yeah, the construction company. So they would build these big buildings and then they could do the virtual reality and walk through kind of that, what we were doing over at Clyde Brown yesterday for our, the new school. And then one of the other things I wanted to just add at the end, I actually had spent some time writing a grant for the American Student Associate, American Student Assistance about middle school career exploration. And what, what really got me interested in it was that it, the research that they've done is about what's happening with student debt that students are going into college and exploring, as we talked, and taking more and more years. They're coming out with enormous amounts of debt. What they have found is this is impacting their quality of life. They're not able to go on and afford to go to higher learn, you know, advanced degrees, being able to afford to buy a home, getting married, things like that. So their push is to bring career exploration to, into the middle school and really start to get kids thinking about what their passions are, what they want to do. And that in turn can help them make better choices for course selection when they're in high school. And then, you know, have a more solid idea that they can go into college for four, do it in four years, get out and get their degree and incorporate less debt. So that was kind of, you know, I had just put a link. They, they have a couple of studies. And it was just pretty interesting to think about, you know, you were talking about $75,000 worth of debt per year. I mean, that's, that's, that's a lot of money for, you know, someone 22-years-old to take on. So I think starting to kind of make a mind shift about really weighing what, what you really want to do. And, you know, is the career sustainable and, and looking at pay compared to what you're spending on when you're going to college, I think is something to really think about.
So you bring, that's an interesting point because, Mark, you were talking about, or maybe it was Riley, there's a lot of kids who are undecided. So now, I went to Northeastern, it was a co-op school, so it was very different. I went into a certain college and I had the path. I was unique from my friends, but I was very focused on what I was doing and the co-ops helped me get to the end. So with debt being so crushing, and education is great, but if you come out undecided with no kind of focus and maybe no internships and no co-ops, and I know Northeastern's different, but a lot of schools are going to that. That's, you are of a scary uphill climb to pay those debts with maybe no real focus. That's, which I know is not on the high school, but I, I commend you for thinking about, it should start as early as possible and guide them as much as you can. It's still, there's a lot of that is on the family, and it's a lot of that individual's decision and, and parents. I'm not trying to make us the parents, but I just scared to think that some of these costs to schools where they would come out and what are they going to do?
Well, and I think the opportunity to go out into the real world and see what it looks like, like this industry day that they're having at Adessa. And, you know, even just going to the fire station and the police station and just really, you know, they can say, I want to be a nurse, but have you sat down and talked to a nurse? Have you been in, you know, emergency department at, you know, 2:00 in the morning in Boston? Do you know what this really looks like? That kind of thing, just to start thinking about, you know, not just the ideal part of the job, but really what it all entails, it all entails. And I think that, you know, I'm, I'm loving it. This has been a fantastic opportunity. I'm having a great time. So, you know, the more connections I can make in the community and even beyond, I think can benefit the students in Millis.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
There are two other programs that we'd like to come and present on perhaps in May. The Global Scholars and the STEAM Scholars that we've initiated and developed at the high schools. So those, as you were both just saying, are programs to get students more into the field and more aware of and having experiences with, with career pathways. And so we'll work on, on that for May.
Because if they want to be a computer scientist and they figure that out in 10th grade that they don't want to be, no harm, no foul, right? They take another elective the next, next semester opposed to go into two years and then realizing, this is not what I want to do. So it's not all on us and you, but it's.
Sometimes it changes. They look out and they think they know exactly what it is and it shifts, so.
And we try and like, we do try and push the career education at every age. And we're trying to move them more towards like, if, if not an internship, even just a job shadow for a day. So one thing that's been nice that's come out of the conference is that we survey all the presenters that come in, all the professionals that come in. We ask them if they would ever, at their job, be willing and able to have a high school student come shadow them for the day. So we have that list of connections, and it's just a matter of connecting the kids to those opportunities.
He, he's gone, but Drew is getting in, he's going to a great school and a great program. He will never have a problem finding a job in that field. Not that that's for everyone, but emergency management, there are so many opportunities. That is amazing for him. Good for him. I'm proud. He should be. That's a great opportunity. Any other questions? Thank you for all that you, our guys are doing. You guys have questions, Tom?
No.
Thanks for everything. You are helping.
Last thing I'd say before we go, I know we've taken a lot of time, is just two, the thank yous that I forgot to mention earlier on. It's like our office and like what we all do wouldn't happen if it wasn't for the support people that we have. So Erica Harkey has been phenomenal for us all year. She's a Millis High School alum. And we've had another Millis High School alum working with us this year, too, Olivia's a total, who's actually here today. She's a grad student at Bridgewater State finishing up her degree in school council. So she graduated from Millis High School. She came back to do her internship with us, which has been awesome. So Erica and Olivia have been phenomenal helps for us all year long. And like the scholarship that's up, right now, I'm running, is brand-new this year, and Olivia and Erica worked on it together and put it all together. So I, you know, we wouldn't do anything that we do, we wouldn't have the help that we do. So we appreciate you for that. So I had to get that in because I know Erica will watch this. I'm sure Olivia has a DVR.
She's been videoing it the whole time.
Mark, it's fair to say that since your, the office has grown, the presentations are getting much better now that it's not just you. So. Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you guys very much.
Okay. Well, let, let him give a second to.
And actually, Jean, you can connect your computer.
Do you want to quickly do the enrollment before she's hooking up the computer?
Enrollment, we have a couple changes, but not a lot. Thank you. Two fewer students and one in the middle, one in the high school, and one more student in and out of district placement. School choice remains at 81. So very brief update on enrollment where we stand. And I am happy to introduce Jean Noonan, the Director of our Extended Day Program.
Hello, Jean.
And Carrie is back to speak to the financial aspects. Jean, you've been with us now three years?
Not quite.
Two.
Not, yep, two full and part of, part of the third.
Is this your third time presenting or second time?
Second.
Second time.
And Jean's done a wonderful job in my, in my estimation of really increasing the educational quality of the Extended Day Program, a lot of wonderful experiences. So.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
I feel like after that last one, we should start with the head and shoulders, knees and toes because they had such awesome information to share. I'm sure the listening gets tiresome after a little bit. But I appreciate having the opportunity to be here tonight and to tell you a little bit about our program. I use, I don't know if you remember, at the beginning of the year, you folks had a list of questions. I used those sort of to inform what I was going to talk about. So please feel free to obviously jump in. One of the questions that you had for me was how many applications have been rejected due to the lack of space in the program? And you'll see a theme as we go out, go throughout the night, that there's interconnected variables in all of what we're going to talk about tonight, and space is just one of them. But it also has to do with our enrollment numbers, our ratios of staff to students, and as well as our space. So primarily, our goal is to safely accommodate all of the children that we can accommodate. Many factors, we take many factors into account. Did we receive the enrollments prior to the deadline? What are our current ratios of staff to children, as I was talking about earlier? Are we able to meet the needs of each of the individual children? All the kids need something different. So that's obviously something important to take into account. And then is our physical space enough to accommodate, especially where we have shared space for most of our programs? This year, we were able to accommodate all who applied prior to the deadline. We do have a little waiting period after the deadline because we have that in place for a reason. We want to make sure we're planning accordingly. But we were really able to accommodate everybody except for, we've got four children on a waitlist right now for our before-school program. So there might be a little waiting period. It's not necessarily 100% due to space, but we are able to accommodate everybody eventually. And that's our goal, just to make sure we've got everything safely. What is our class size and what has it been over the last five years? I'm working with the information that I have from the past couple of years, but then I did have to dig back a little bit. So I'm not 100% sure how accurate the old info is. I pulled it from different sources. As of about a week ago, we had 149 children enrolled in the program. And I broke it down for you by before-school, our kindergarten-after-school, which I separated because they're in the annex right now, our after-school at Clyde Brown, which is first through third graders, our after-school at the middle school, which is our fourth through sixth graders, our toddler program, and our preschool program. At the end of last year, we had 154 students, so we're about consistent with that. The prior year, again, was very similar with 158. The two years prior, there were about 10 to 20 more. I'm not sure if those numbers are 100% accurate, but, but they were pretty close as well. So, so one of the other questions you had for me was what is the number of spots that we, we should reserve for during the next school year? It's always tough to tell. And again, this has a lot to do with staffing as well as the enrollments and that kind of thing. We also have the new school to consider next year, so we're going to change our configuration somewhat. As you know, the toddler program will be phased out. This was the last year for that, and that was something we had decided last year. And the numbers show that it still consistently made sense. Our preschool RAP program, which is the program that we have that goes around the school's preschool, we'll have one classroom for that next year, one dedicated classroom over at Clyde Brown. I'm banking on a maximum of 20 students. I think that that's really the max that one classroom for that age group should be able to accommodate. I, I think actually the school's preschool does 15 or less. Don't quote me on that. But I, I think it's 15. So I really think 20, 20 is a maximum for us. Consideration will obviously be given to the periods of time that the preschool is not in session. So for example, if preschool runs 9:00 to 11:30, and then 12:30 to 3:00, from 11:30 to 12:30, we may have double the number of children than we would in any other session. I'm still working on the logistics of how we want to work that, and I have some ideas this year that. and I have some ideas this year that, so maybe we could essentially have 24 at that time, but maybe 12 are at lunch and having a recess time while 12 are in the classroom having a story time and vice versa. So I'm hoping we can do something with that. The before-school program at Clyde Brown will include fifth graders this year because, because the school will have through fifth grade. Where we don't have a before-school for fifth graders, God bless you. I think next year, that number could bump up as much as 20 students. So we'd be looking at about 70 for before-school. Our after-school at Clyde Brown, again, if it stays consistent with this year, I'm going to anticipate 65 to 75 students each day because it's going to include the kindergartners who are currently at after-school at the annex. So they'll also be at Clyde Brown. That said, because that number's going to bump up with the kindergartners and in fact, I've already spoken with Bob a little bit, we're going to keep four to six over here at the middle school as we have this year. What I love about it is the proximity to the new school. So we'll be able to share staff when we need to. We'll be able to share programs between the schools. So I'm very excited about that, but we'll be spread out a little bit more in terms of space. Funding sources, always a fun question. Somebody had asked about any grants available. Right now, we're 100% tuition-based. I have not, to be perfectly honest with you, explored any grants since I've been here. When I was in Wilmington for 17 years, I explored a few and each time I did run into roadblocks because there's more funds available the higher free and reduced population that you have or the population that is eligible for free and reduced lunch. And we're just low on that in this district. There's also a voucher program that I did somewhat take advantage of in my other district. They have new caveats on that now that you need to be participating in the MASQRIS, which is the Quality Rating Improvement System. It's a very involved process. We were, before I came on board, you did accept vouchers, so you were participating in that. The March before I came, that expired and had not been renewed. So I did some research back when I first came and there were only two families at the time that were using it. So I kind of weighed what we'd have to put into it at this point with how many were using it. And at the time, it did not seem like it was a payoff. But it's something that we can still explore down the road.
Can I stop for one second?
Sure.
I'm going to connect this back to the earlier discussion on school lunches. Terry, do you envision the amount of people, the amount of people on free and reduced lunches increasing when you start your process of trying to get back some of the back money from lunches? In your experience in the past, have you seen an increase in that designation?
There will be an increase. Unfortunately, I don't think for Millis, given how low you are, it will be an increase that will bring you up to the level where you would qualify for some of these grants that we're talking about.
Unless the grants, but the, that program, meaning if there are more kids on free and reduced, could it make it more worthwhile to try, not to create work for a small amount, but if now the potential population increases, is it something that would be worthwhile to explore? I don't, I don't know. I just throw that out there.
It's two different programs. So the free and reduced would be what drives the grants or your eligibility for grants. The QRIS, which is the MAS Quality Rating and Improvement System, is what drives the vouchers.
Are the vouchers tied to people who are on free and reduced?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, not at all, no. They don't, they don't go hand in hand.
That's what I thought it was.
Yeah, no, two separate things. But it does make sense that if someone were to be, you would still have to be eligible for the voucher.
And most likely, you would be on free and reduced lunch-
Probably.
-to be eligible for the voucher.
Probably.
Okay. All right, not to make more work, but I just tried to connect the two.
Yep, exactly. One of the questions again was, is there enough physical space in classrooms for all enrolled students by age and grade? So we talked a little bit about that. I'm definitely going to keep four through six here next year and I think that that will have a big impact on it. Physical space is truly only one consideration, so it depends on the staffing, really. That's, that's our main driver is, is the ratios of staff to children. So we could have 100 rooms available, but only four staff. So we need to work in how that's going to work out. Definitely, the physical space is important because we need the consistency with the kids. So much of it will be shared space at Clyde Brown next year, other than the preschool room. One of the things that I definitely need to speak with Jason a little bit more about and we have talked about it to date is what happens when we don't have that space? I'd like to plan for that upfront. So for example, if we're using the cafeteria or we're using the gym and other programs come in, we need to have something upfront. What's our backup plan upfront for that space so that we can continue with our programming? Another thing that's a huge driver is what we're going to offer. We have, as Mrs. Gustafson was saying, we've really worked hard to bring new programs into our before and after-school and especially our after-school. We've got a huge focus on some STEM activities. We've got a huge focus on social-emotional learning activities. We're really trying to bump up the quality of the programming. And yes, space does have an impact. You know, do we have enough space to offer more things at once? Do we have enough staff so that we can have two people working on this magnetile activity while we have two people working on these relay races and, you know, all these different kinds of things? So it's all intertwined. And so this was a big one for me and one of the questions was, does extended day, extended day supplement the student's school day in terms of education? And I think I referred to this a little bit when we first met last year. Absolutely. And it may not be the same kind of education that we're looking at in the classroom. It may not come across in the same way as it does in the classroom, but there's a lot of what I call secret learning going on. They don't know what they're learning and there's so much involved in, excuse me, some of the cognitive skills, physical abilities, vocabulary, the social skills. It's unsurpassed when you watch what's going on in an after-school program or an extended-day program. The kid's really learning to be a good teammate. They're learning how to be disappointed and not always get what they want. And how do you deal with that? You know, they're, they're learning how to ask a friend to play. You know, there, these are things that I know it sounds like they should be common sense. They're not always, our kids are so scheduled now from the time they get up in the morning till going to school, till the soccer games, with the coach telling them what to do and all that. It's not like when some of us, I don't want to age myself, but we're young and you dropped your bag off and you went out to play and you had to figure it out. So we're doing a lot of that and there's so much of that going on right now. I don't do it justice and I really, I really have to commend my staff for, for the quality of the programming they're bringing in and the constant research that we're doing to try and find more activities. We're doing a lot of theme-based activities and much of the learning that we do takes place through play. So I always, I always feel a little bit offended when I hear people say, oh, they're just playing. Who puts "just" in front of "playing"? It's, that's what kids do. That's how they're learning. It's, it really is tremendous. I did put a slide in here with, with one of these statistics that I love. I've seen it many times before. Scientists have recently determined that it takes approximately 400 repetitions, 400, to create a new synapse in the brain unless it's done with play, in which case it takes between 10 and 20. It's pretty amazing.
Hence the game's in my office.
That's true. That's true. So I just wanted, I know this is not doing it justice, but I did include a few pictures of one of our themed days. We've been doing a lot around themes and this was a day that we did the Winter Olympics. And a couple of the pictures that I wanted to point to, you could see the one on the top left with all the clear cups. Those are actually like plastic cups. The instruction or the challenge was build a winter structure. So we had boxes there, we had cups there, we had all different kinds of materials. This, they started with different things. This one in particular took off with the clear cups. It was their igloo. They were experimenting with how to stack them. Do you do two together and then one up like that? They were experimenting with doorways. They were experimenting with how many people could be in there. They were experimenting if some fell down, do the rest of them fall down? It was really exciting to watch, really exciting. I know I don't make cups sound exciting, but it was really fun. And that's all learning that's going on and they're having a blast doing it. Below that, you'll see they had a game, like a beanbag game where they're throwing the beanbags through the, through the different holes. They're scoring points and I don't know if you could see, there's a little girl in the background and I, I couldn't blow it up big enough so you could see their scores, but they were, they were calculating how many more do we need to get ahead and all that and really working together. You know, you'd hear that's not fair, that's not fair. They were working out how you make it fair. So I loved it. And the Lego one, I, I've just got a, this was not an instruction at all. Do you see the Olympic rings?
Yep.
Those were made out of Legos by one of our students and they're all interconnected. They're not on top of each other. He figured out how to interconnect all of those and was so proud of it. I sent that picture to his mom. She was so excited. But he went around and showed everybody. He was really proud of himself and frankly, I was too. I don't think I could have done it. So that's the kind of learning that is supplementing what's going on in the classroom and that's just a snippet. So I talked a little bit about this. How, how does it supplement? It nurtures their imagination. They learn problem-solving, working with others, sharing. They develop and hone the skills that they need such as inquiry, expression, experimentation and teamwork. And most of all, it's a happy place to be. It takes a lot of the stress away, most of the time. Most of the time. So another question was, are the staff appropriately certified and trained? We've had a big focus this year on professional development. We're trying to, we're nowhere near where I think we need to be, but we've made leaps and bounds this year. I'm not going to read all of these to you, but just so you know, the regulations that I cited here are from the Department of Early Education and Care and these are the staffing regulations for licensed programs. We're license-exempt because we're part of a public school, but we still use these to guide where we want to be, where our best practice is. So I can tell you all of our staff from our leaders in training through the director have at least the minimum, most of them exceed what, what the minimum qualifications are. And I can, if you ever want those, I can give them to you in specifics. So what I did talk about was some of the training that we've been doing this year and that goes hand in hand, I think, too, with the population that is available to staff these extended-day programs. The hours in and of themselves are really not desirable. If you've got someone who's looking to work mother's hours or something like that, it's not before and after-school, it's during the school day. So you're challenged to who the population is that you're pulling from to work in these programs. When you have people who are less professionally-minded perhaps, professional development isn't important to them. They're not looking at this as a career. So what I'm trying to do through some of these trainings is professionalize the extended-day program, is to help them understand the importance of the work that they're doing and help our community understand it as well so that we can combine some of these things to attract more qualified individuals. And people who think of it as a career. I never thought this was going to be my career. I thought I was going to be a classroom teacher. And I did extended day, an after-school program and I said to my friend who owned the business, I said, I'm just doing this temporarily. And I got into it and absolutely loved it. That was 20 years ago. So it can be a profession. Some of the things that we've done this year. Some of our staff participated in the NEDS Conference. That's the Network of Extended-Day Directors and they do a fall conference every year. It's all public school-operated extended-day programs, so it's a great organization to belong to. And funnily enough, their acronym this year was PLAY. It was Purposeful Learning all year. So it's a theme for us. So they participated in some great workshops there. You're not the boss of me, children with special needs and yoga and mindful techniques. We also partnered with the Fire Department with Chief Barrett to do first aid and CPR training this year and that's something that we'll do every year. And they've been fabulous to us and we did it over there in their facility as well. I have been requiring all my staff to be trained in first aid and CPR. Just recently, and I'm very proud of this, we did a program called Behavior Begins With Respect, created by Donna Shay at the Peter Pan Center. And I partnered with the Director of the Norfolk Extended-Day Program because cost is an issue. And when you're a small district, you know, you, you don't always have the funds to, or the number of staff to justify what it would cost for something like that. So we partnered together. 21 of my staff attended and I believe they had about 13 of theirs, something like that. I don't know if I said. But we also did it over at the public library. I worked with Ken Tolson over there and so it was a change of venue. I think it elevated the importance of it and the topic was phenomenal. It really was helpful. We did our own training with Tammy Moriso, who is our behavior analyst, not behavior analyst, she's our behavior consultant this year. And we did our own positive behavior strategies and we talked amongst our staff, we grouped together to talk about different behaviors that we were having trouble dealing with. What different things could we do? What can we try to help these kids be more successful? What words can we use? And we actually acted out some of the scenarios. So it really got them involved in it. Staff have also participated in a number of college courses this year. Special needs child, behavior management, child development and early childhood curriculum. So all really positive steps. So one of the biggest questions, are we adequately staffed? And what are we basing our staffing levels on? Well, I do think, back to the state regulations, I think that they're a little old. I think they could stand to be reviewed, but they're basically telling us in an after-school program, you should be thinking about 1 to 10. When you're realistically in an after-school program, that's not a realistic number. I think you really need to take into consideration what all the needs of the students are. You need to take into consideration your layout, your quality of activities, what it is you're looking for. And we really end up being closer to a 1 to 7 or a 1 to 8 ratio most of the time. It also depends on your balance of more senior staff to more leaders in training. You know, if 50% of your staff are leaders in training, I, I think your numbers need to be lower. Your ratios need to be a lot lower. And so at the bottom line, always safety. You know, how many do you, how many staff do you need to safely run your program? So a theme that we've been talking about. Investing in our staff really is investing in our children. I did give you some of the statistics in terms of what the salaries are and the pay rates are that we're- rates are that we're paying our staff right now, and, and you know the old adage, you get what you pay for. And I, I want to say, we have some of the most dedicated staff on board that I've seen in quite a long time. We're losing a lot of our seniors this year, which I'm very sad. Some of them have been with us since I started, so I, I'm sorry to lose them. But we do need more staff who maybe are educated in behaviors, are educated in curriculum, maybe have an interest in recreation. We need more of a balance, and I think to attract those people, I think we need to, again, professionalize our program and have compensation. Let's face it, we love what we do, but we all need a paycheck. So I, I think that it's important that we balance that out. And one of the, one of the slides I had in here that, that I'm sure you all saw is, I would love to be able to put together a proposal, maybe do some checking with some of the community, some of my colleagues from Neds, the Network of Extended Day Directors, and see where they are in terms of salaries. But I think we also need to not just compare to those other programs, but compare to industries, local industries that are not extended day programs. Those are the people. We're competing with Roach Brothers. You know, we're, we're competing with all of the different companies in this area, and if we can't even meet where they are, to do what I consider a really, really, really critical job, and we're affecting children's lives, I think we need to take that into account. So I would love to be able to put together a proposal for that. Unfortunately, when you're going to pay more, you need to charge more. So I have as well looked into what some of the tuitions are, and I just, I put a flash out to the, to the Neds folks and said, you know, what are you charging right now? It's really tricky because no one is comparing apples and apples. So some have a monthly rate, some have a weekly rate, some have three hours in the afternoon, some have two hours, some have every Wednesday as an early release day. So it was tricky. I got as close as I could to comparing an hourly rate. Some, I did not ask the question, have people increased recently, but some offered that, so I threw it in there as well. But regardless of what our colleagues are doing, I, I think knowing what we are trying to do in Milis, the quality of programming that we are really trying to bring in, it needs more staff, and that means more money. So, and I, and I think we want to continue in that direction. I hope you're hearing some positive feedback. I'm hearing a lot of positive feedback. People are really liking the different activities that we're offering now and the variety and the direction we're going in. We're always going to be growing, but I think we're going in the right direction.
Wasn't there more slide, there's more slides on our thing?
Yes.
Oh, is that just?
It might be Terry's.
Yeah, I was kind of following her page turning, and she stopped turning pages.
You are. I did stop turning pages because I'm not carried away by that program.
So, before we talk up, I'm sorry. Do you have something else you want to talk? Can we stop here for a second?
Yes.
I was going to say, do you want me to skip to the survey?
Yeah, go to the survey, and then I'd like to come back to this.
Okay.
Oh, boy.
There you go.
I can't, I'm out.
Okay. So this, I was, I do not, did not know the DART schools, but I can find those out and see if I can specifically find that information. What I had done was I just blasted it out there to the Neds group.
No, there's some comparable schools in there.
Yeah, so as they were coming.
No, there, there's, those are decent schools.
Okay. So I was trying to put it up as, as an hourly rate. If you look at Milis for before school, we're at 550 an hour.
So this is, so just to explain, it's 550 an hour to the parents or to the guardians?
Correct. Tuition, that's the tuition.
Okay, so if we break it down by hour?
Correct.
So that's what this, the, the value here is per hour. Okay.
Yep. I think that was the only way I could do it.
No, no, I just wanted to just make sure we were speaking in the same terms.
Yep. No, that would be hourly. And then after-school, we're at 508, and after-school, middle school, 550 as well.
So I'm having a hard time seeing that, just because it's, it's far away, and it's small in the packet. Though, that's, I'm looking, that's spelled alphabetically.
Yep.
If we moved it around, where are we?
Yep.
On an hourly rate?
So, so the average for before-school came out to 654.
Okay.
High was 1018, and low was $4.
Okay. Thank you for providing that range. That's helpful.
No problem. And then for after-school, average was 655.
Yep.
We're at 508. High was 11, and low was 438. Middle school, we're a little bit closer. We're at 550. Average was 618. High was 833, and low is 407. And I could get you the bigger.
Yeah, no, I could, I could pull it up in the packet. It'll be easier, just that, when the printout, it's on three. So, for me individually, when we look at any fee-based program.
Yep.
And we look at the discussion, or start to have the discussion about raising fees, where we stand to others is not as important to, you, you hit on what I think is the vital point. What do we need to do in Milis? What does it ideally look like in Milis? And then, what do we have to do over the course of, and I don't think we're going to make it in one year.
Right.
What's a three-year plan to do that?
Yep.
Then we could look at, so in three years, we're going to be here, and then we can look at that chart. I'm not saying that that chart's not helpful, but that's not the starting point for me, because it's never been compelling that we're on the low end, so we need to, we have room to grow.
Right.
If you tell us, to get where we need to be based on your experience now, what, 18 months? No. How many months?
Almost three years.
Three years, three years, sorry, sorry.
Almost three years.
This is the second time. Three years, where do we need to be? It's going to cost an extra $5,000. I'm just throwing this out. $5,000 this year. We're going to have to do another $5,000. We, we need to ramp it up, and this is what the plan would be. So, I, I speak for myself, but I think that all of this is helpful. This has actually been, and I've been on the committee since 2010, this is probably one of the best presentations with information from extended day.
Oh, thank you.
That I have ever seen, and so that is, it's very helpful. We have had good presentations, but this was, you answered all of our questions. You gave us a bunch of information. You gave us information both from curriculum side and also from kind of the, the budget, the budget side. So that is very helpful, and it's clear through your presentation, the passion you have. My kids are, were graduates of the program, not that they're graduates, but they went through the program. It's a great program, and it was helpful for my kids, and it was helpful for me and my wife to manage kind of the career and the two, and the hectic, it was very hectic. So I speak from experience. I had good, I had very good experience in the program as, as my kids did. So, I'm, I'm interested in, I, I don't know if this proposal is based on what you need to be, or if this is just a starting point, but I, I think we could entertain, not necessarily tonight, but we could entertain the thought process, because you've already put out the fees for next year.
We could certainly flesh out a more formal proposal for you, both on what, what, why, why we would need the fees, and then what we would recommend.
Yeah, I think, I think anytime, and, and this has happened with Nancy, anytime there's a proposal, we'll, we're never going to say, no, we won't look at the proposal. We'll look at it, and, and from, from the standpoint of other fee-based programs, this is a completely self-contained program, right? Preschool and kindergarten or not, there's, there's mix. There's some mandatory where we have to pay the district, and then the parents are helping play. This is a self-contained program that, that, there is a connection to the school, obviously. You're in our, in our program, you're our employees, but I think the fee, a fee increase on this, after a proposal, I think is something we can absolutely look at. Any other thoughts or comments from the committee? Are you good?
So, I don't know if you're going to go into this, Terry, at all after, but the only question that I had on here that wasn't really answered is, like, what is the total operating cost of extended day?
I did put that in there, yeah.
I figured. I just wasn't sure.
Yep.
So this is where the, this is where this goes down?
Yeah, because I have some financial questions that I'm not going to put on you.
Yeah.
I'm going to put on to Terry, so, all positive things for you, and...
As well you should. Let me just start by saying, and prefacing this by saying, in the two decades plus that I've been doing this, this is the first district I've been in where I don't control the finances of this program. Typically speaking, the extended day or before-school and after-school program, or whatever it's called, runs through a revolving account, just like kindergarten, just like preschool, just like, well, I won't use food services as an example, because that's another unique thing here in Milis. Okay? But, so I don't have the detail that I would expect to have, particularly on the expense side. And what I have on the wage side is somewhat limited, but at least I do see payroll sheets. So...
Can I, can I stop you for one second and ask a question?
Sure.
So the expenses, what you spend money on and how you spend the money, who approves those expenditures? Is it just you, or do you submit them to our office?
I, I submit them to your office as well. Yeah, school, school committee does see them.
Okay, so where occasionally, so I know, I've seen the payroll before.
Yep.
So we're assigning other, actually, I have, because I've seen stuff for vacation week and field trips.
Right. Yep.
So...
And I actually also can request a report from the town, which I do, so I can periodically reconcile, make sure they're applying.
So there's some history long before you came here, and I will clearly state this again for the sixth time. And I know we are moving towards going to...
And I hear news on that.
Munis. But for years, just let's play, Terry, I'm going to give you a little history, because you always give us a little history. So the history is, when I was having lunch with Jimmy Carter, I said... Dave, did you laugh? Sorry. You're not supposed to talk to the guy behind the screen. If, in fact, you, I will, I will not go off on this if you say that we are going quickly to Munis. If we are not going to Munis anytime soon, we need to get extended day financials into our system, and we need to have control, because you are the business manager, right? You have fiduciary responsibility from us to control the finances in conjunction with the superintendent and, and the school committee, and we all sign the bills. None of this is directed at you. Please, I just want you to be clear of that. This has been going on for years, that it's not an independent co-op that just happens to be housed in our schools. It is our program.
We, we agree, and the good news is that the town has received a full grant to implement Munis.
Okay.
Plus the grant to implement the consulting needed to implement Munis. So, this should begin, in fact, I talked with the town finance director today. I know we're a little off-topic, but...
No, no.
I talked with the town finance director today, so we began talking about looking at charts of accounts and, and implementing these things, and absolutely for, particularly for a program like extended day, but really for all of our programs. What it does is now, the town and the school are seeing the same reports, all run through a DESI chart of accounts, which right now, these are not run through a DESI chart of accounts, but they will be, where, for example, to project, and I'll talk a little bit about, more about this in projections, but where now we can encumber salaries, which makes it much more, much more logical in how you do projections, because you can project based on an individual employee's schedule and what you're expecting to pay them over the course of a year. So, so now a lot of things that right now, we're doing, you know, like with wages, we talk about burn rates a lot, but burn rates are very imperfect, okay? Using encumbrances, much, much more scientific method of being able to...
So what is the timeframe on that? Because what I would not like to see is, a, a year from now, a conversation about extended day where you are saying, we still don't have all of the financials.
I would tell you that the overly optimistic view is July 1.
Okay.
And that's aggressive.
That's fine.
I mean, that's a really aggressive timeframe. I would say a rational timeframe in my mind is January 1st.
So next year, when we, when you present, when we have extended day back, sometime in April, maybe May, towards the end of the year, we will be in a different place with financials.
Yes. That would be my hope.
Okay. Okay.
So that would certainly be my hope, so.
All right.
I'm, I'm excited. That was the most exciting thing I heard today.
That's a good, well, that's good, not just for this program, but for many, for, for the bigger picture.
For the bigger picture. Oh, yeah.
That's how I worked prior as well.
So, so what you have through 18, okay, is basically beginning fund balances.
Bless him.
The revenue that was received in that year based on the town report that's given to us, the salaries that were expended, actually expended for the year, the expenses that were actually expended for the year, and the ending balance, and obviously then that, you know, generates the, the total operating costs. And again, this is based on a spreadsheet that is provided to us by the town. They provide one to us every year. They've provided, Jean actually compiled this information. They provide her with this information for her program. So that's what we have for history up through last year.
So before you go off this, like, so I get that the accounting and the, the bookkeeping will be different.
Yes.
You did say something. Should we be putting this revenue into a revolving account?
In most districts, that's exactly where it would be. Both, both the expenses and the revenue would be in a revolving account.
So we should start and look at that process of doing that?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that's one of the things, when we restructure this, and one of the things that I think Nancy and I, and Mike and Carol, need to have a discussion and say, okay, whatever happened in the past, tap it in the past. Now that we're going to restructure here, we're all going to be in Munis, we can all see everything, meaning town can see our stuff, we can see their stuff, is let's talk about this, let's talk about food services, the other big one, that's an issue, and they should be in revolving funds, and they should be handled that way, so, you know, why not do it?
So if we can do that as we convert, then that's the appropriate time, so we should, you should pursue that.
Right, so I, I think that's certainly part of the agenda of the conversion, is saying, let's not just, it's not just converting accounting, it's converting how we do things.
Let's clean up whatever we need to clean up and tie up loose ends, if there are loose ends.
I agree.
Okay.
One question.
Yes?
The total operating cost on this equals revenue in every column, and it's not the actual total operating cost. So the total operating cost should be the salary plus expenses, I would presume?
Yeah, it's probably a formula issue, and I apologize for that.
Yep.
So, so we'll fix that.
Yeah.
The ending balance rolls correctly.
Right.
It's not working.
Right.
Nope, that's a formula. I'm sorry.
That's, that's all right.
So, projecting was an interesting challenge. I've actually done this three different ways now at this point. But as of this writing, I had two different ways. So, basically, the top line is real numbers, okay? So as of 3-1, we had a beginning base coming into this year of 124, 671. We currently have revenue on the books, we have received, $350,900. We have spent to date in salaries, $273,442. Now, I want to be careful when I say that, okay? That is what's been posted to the town system. Now, as I understand Munis, if it's like every other Tyler product I've worked with, to do a payroll, you have to post. So in my mind, that's everybody that's, you know, it's current. But I don't know that, and unfortunately, the payroll person has been, so I was unable to confirm this, okay? Expenses, same type of thing. With every Tyler product I've ever worked with, if you're processing an invoice, you got to post it. So 54, 803 should be, you know, invoices to date, okay? And again, if you play all that through, you could conceivably project a fund balance of 147, 325. Now, version A of my projections uses a burn rate based on the above, and basically, it would say... and basically, it would say that, okay, when the fiscal year ends, that there will be $526,000 in change of revenue, there'll be $410,000 of salaries, $82,000 of expenses, and we'd have a fund balance of $158,000. The only problem with that, that doesn't look right compared to history. Doesn't look even close to being right. So version B gets a little bit more nuanced in how we do the statistical projecting. So it looks at how your revenue has kind of increased, using a moving average. Then with the salaries, it looked at a typical, again, looking back over three years, looking at what a typical increase in salaries would be, all right? That's not necessarily accurate either, but it's a more conservative approach. Same type of thing with expenses, though expenses, I tempered a little bit, because expenses don't necessarily follow what salaries do. Expenses sometimes will stay...
Excuse me for one second.
Yeah.
I'm having a hard time, we know how many kids we have in the program. The program's been running from, just for this, from '07, '01 of 2018, we're now March 10. Unless there's a dramatic, either influx of kids coming in, which I don't think would happen, but in kids coming out, why can't we have a relatively certain projection revenue? Where we are 10 months in, almost 10 months in.
I can give a closer one.
And then, the thing about the salaries is, once again, we know all of the employees.
Yes.
We know, we've been paying them, because some of them work over the summer, from July 1, we're almost midway through April. I don't understand why we can't...
Because I have 28 employees, and one of them has a set schedule, and she's sitting next to me. I have 27 other people...
How much, how, how do they, how much do they vary, that draws a...
They're quite a bit.
They do vary quite a bit, but...
But how about the total?
And then, the other thing you need to understand, and I'll let Jean speak to it, because Jean certainly knows it better than I, but the other thing, from a financial standpoint, you're looking at, you're not looking at a program in many respects, you're looking at almost four different programs.
Well, cost out the four different programs and total up the salary, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but they're sub-units of the bigger picture.
I understand, but it's not as simple of an exercise as it sounds. I guess I would say that. Again, now, I went through, mentioned that I went through a third scenario, because I know you folks want to see these things more granular, okay, my term. And so I actually went through the salary piece, and I tried to do exactly what you suggested, and literally looked at every single employee. And I came up with a number that was closer to the $536 than it was the $410, but it was less. It was around $515,000. And again, Jean and I have not necessarily had a chance to refine any of these numbers.
That's fine.
But it's very difficult when you have, you really have a before, sure, before-school program and after-school program, you have vacation week programs, and you have a summer program. And all of those have different staffing patterns, they have different hours for different people, and the rates depend on what mixes and matches of the staff are involved.
So I would, my suggestion would be, prior to coming back with the tuition increase,
Yep.
is that you guys dig into this, these operating costs, and we have a good idea. Because I'm, as much as I just aim to entertain a fee increase with the committee, I don't want to do it on three different versions of what it costs to run the program. And I get that it's complicated, because it's not running through your office, and it's Excel spreadsheets across the town, but if we're going to really have a conversation about this, we need to really hone in on realistic numbers on what it costs to run the program.
That's fine, not a problem. And again, we will, obviously, again, Jean and I will work together, and we'll get it as clean and clear as we can, but again, projections are just, they're always just that, so we'll give you a basis of why, what we based our projections on.
Sure.
We'll give you the detail, and we'll go from there.
And hopefully, with going over to Munis, whenever we go over, either in three months, or in six months, or seven months, we're in a better, we're in a much better place.
Yeah, see, the beauty of, the two things that happen, and I know we're not talking about Munis, but I will talk about it just for a second, two things that happen with this program...
It's relevant to this discussion, sure.
Okay? Is that, first off, you can take an individual, regardless of what their schedule is, what their hourly pay is, and you can encumber them based on their anticipated schedule and their hourly pay. So if you have 28 different people with 28 different rates of pay, 28 different schedules, you can still encumber all of them, okay? So that's the first thing. So you really have a solid number to begin with. And likewise, you can unencumber them when they leave and, you know, swap around. The second thing is a position control feature, again, is a feature that helps you when you're doing projections for staffing and for salaries, because if you happen to be doing projections, and it just happens to be an open position at the moment, you can actually factor...
Sure.
That that position is open, but you're going to fill it. And when you fill it, that position has a certain number of hours associated with it, a certain number of days, and a rate of pay.
You have talked about that position control issue several times, so I hear you.
So, yeah, so I mean, those are, you know, you can't have them soon enough for me, so...
Anything on this from you guys? I think we have one more slide, and I think we...
Well, actually, we can skip by it, because we really talked about what we just talked about.
I was just going to say.
Just all the issues that we have in trying to do this, and again, we will work very hard to get you as refined a number as we can.
And once again, this was a great presentation, and Terry, this is, you know, this is a program that is not as easy to dig into as the others. You've, it's taken you time to dig into all the other ones, and this one is even more complicated because of the accounting piece that was set up long before you got here. So the good news is, it sounds like we have some sense of the end in sight. It just depends when. And once you guys get those numbers together, we can have, because it's not going to impact, it's going to be really going in after the next year, right? Because you've already put out your rates.
I have, I've put out my rates for preschool this year, but not for before and after-school yet. I was hoping to do that though, the next week, so...
Well, we don't have another meeting until the end of April.
Yeah.
And Jean, you were recommending just a 3% increase, because minimally, even if we don't do a market adjustment on the salaries, the 3% annually stays level with...
Cost of living.
The cost of living increase.
Cost of operating.
What, there is language that we put in the kindergarten letter each year that gives us the ability to raise it after. If you really want to send your letters out next week, you can put that language in, and then work hard to come back on the 30th.
Okay, I do think I did put that language in my preschool one.
So I would use the same language for the others, and we can have a conversation on the 30th. And then if nothing changes, it's fine, but you've given yourself the wiggle room.
Okay. Very good.
Do you have something?
I just think, I would just request that you'd like to be agenda in there.
Oh.
Make sure that...
Oh.
Yeah.
Right.
It could be May 7, if that's early enough.
It might be a better...
May 7?
May 7.
And once really, in the grand scheme of things, it's not going to make that much of a difference. We're not going to them in June, we're going, yeah, fair point. Do we meet on the 7th? We haven't set the May meetings, but we can make that.
Yeah.
May 7th. It'll give you a little more time.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That's it for you, Nancy, on the superintendent's report?
Correct.
All right, chairman's report, placeholder of strategic planning, we are 90%, 95% done. There's a couple leftover programs and kind of follow-ups that we need to work on. FY budget, 20 budget process, Nancy and I went to, Nancy, Terry and I went to FinCom, and Robin. We went to FinCom the other night, Nancy had a successful presentation, little or no questions. There was one question that did come back from one of the FinCom members about sped. I gave him, I provided him your answers, he thinks he's probably not going to touch it this, the FinCom. I told him if he did have any other questions to get back to me, but I think it was a good presentation. It was helpful, nothing really came up from anyone there. I think it was a good presentation. Skate park proposal. As you recall, a community member came to us, or when? The moods have blended together, sometime in February, I believe. He came to us in February with a proposal to place a skate park in effectively is what is the extended day area now. After the new Clyde Brown, after the old Clyde Brown is ripped down, parking lot is built, according to the site plans and the conversations they had with the elementary school building committee, there would be no impact on the parking infrastructure or anything, is, for the lack of a better term, dead space. So we had a conversation about it, I went to the elementary school building committee. There, he, the chair, does not feel that there's anything, if we did give him approval to build a park there, it would not impact any sort of infrastructure improvements that we'd have to make or building improvements. I'm going to reach out to the chair of the board of selectmen to see if they had any plans, imminent, imminent plans for a senior center, this is something that we talked about in the very, very beginning, and that was 2014 into 15, no, 15. So four years later. So unless things are imminent, I think we should, I'm going to invite Mr. Carkeren back on the 30th, and then I think we, I'm going to explore what kind of vote we can do. I think we have to put some caveats in there and make sure that we just don't give away the land without some sort of checks and balances, but I think he is eager to start the process, because he's going to try to raise all of the funds on his own, and I think he's ready to go. And I don't want to hold him back, but I also want to make sure we're protected as a district. So that is something that we're going to do on the 30th. And then also, the school committee will be having a discussion and making a decision on how we proceed with standard-based grading in the eighth grade. So that is going to be an agenda item on the 30th, as well as the skate park proposal. So Jody, can we just fast forward to put as action items, the skate park proposal and standard-based grading? And that's it for my report, subcommittee reports, elementary school building committee, Denise, anything?
Nothing new to add, there was a great look ahead that was out there, but nothing new since last time. We're not meeting until later in the month.
Okay, correspondence. Oh yes, Mr. Conroy.
No, I just would request that we prefer the reading of the Medway articles, etc., if we haven't been accessing.
Yeah.
Yes, 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 yes.
No, I would not, I was going to mention that they're in there, grade articles. Thank you. I did want to mention one thing, though, that is the high school health fair that you have as a handout that is scheduled for April 26th, it's part of a senior project. Our school nurse, Lynn Malinari, and the adjustment counselor, Ellen Sullivan, have planned this with the student, and you have a list of some of the wonderful activities that will be happening. It's for students on Friday, mostly in the morning, and we wanted you to be aware of the types of wellness activities that will be offered. So that is just a wonderful activity that they've been working very hard on.
Excellent. And then, we have the articles, what else?
The letter from, in your packets also, is the letter from Mr. Phelps announcing his re... And he announced it yesterday at the Clyde Brown faculty meeting as well. You also have the job description and a copy of the draft process for seeking a new principal, and the committee is welcome to be on the interview, a committee member on the interview committee. We will be reaching out to have parents, teachers, and administrators, and support staff, so it's an inclusive committee to make the decision. The timing is challenging, but if we do not feel that the candidates are strong enough, we can always go with an interim, seek an interim for the year, but the ideal would be to get a strong candidate in place. What was also announced yesterday at the faculty meeting was that our internal, our assistant principal is not at this time interested in being a candidate for the position because of her personal and family, so that's...
So I see that the principal, Mr. Phelps, is leaving on September 27, 2019.
That's a little bit up in the air, he's, that is his birthday, and it is his current date of retirement, so he's looking into whether there's stability with that.
Okay, well, we posted, the district, we, the district, posted a job that starts on July 1.
No, because of the vagaries of the software, we had to choose a month. So we chose the July-August range, it wouldn't let us do too much of the typical...
Well, why aren't we choosing the October date?
I think in, for three reasons, we need to attract candidates without misleading them, that we hope to attract a candidate, perhaps, of starting later, if he cannot move his date up. That is, so that part of it is still to be determined.
We don't want to, well, there's a couple things. We don't want to mislead a candidate, but we just posted a position that says a starting date of July, which is misleading, because there was no discussion about hiring a principal on July 1, or July 31, or even August 31. When we last spoke, when you told us, prior to it being public knowledge, Mr. Phelps was finishing up at the end of September, and we would need a new principal on October 1, had a discussion, and there was agreement. In fact, the discussion in the suggestion for an interim principal to get us through the remainder of the school year and start the process in February of March was your, was your suggestion. So when I was quite shocked, we had posted a position for July, we have no funding for that position. We don't know when Mr. Phelps is leaving, so unless he's leaving July 31, a posting of July 1 is not going to work. And in fact, we, there's budgetary decisions, we've finished it, we can clearly have a conversation about the budget, but this is not what we discussed by any means. We discussed hiring an interim when Jason finished the month of September, using the interim to get through the year and start the process, and the typical time to start the process, which is, I think, February and creeping into April. We are now almost mid-April, going into April vacation, and this is not what was discussed at all, not even close.
At the time we had that discussion, we did not know whether he would be retiring in December or in September.
And, but it was a discussion, it was not dependent on when he was...
No, the interim would be a fallback position if we don't have good candidates, or if he were to stay through December, then it made sense to go with an interim and post it. Well, that is, it was part of the discussion, yes, it was. So, but we are here, we are seeking candidates, and we can change the start date to the posting.
Yes, Mr. Conroy.
No, Nancy, the three members of this committee sat in a room and had a question as we were going through how we were going to close our gap. One of the options, and one of the concerns, when it was raised to us about Mr. Phelps's, timing of his retirement, whether it was September, or then there was discussion of maybe it was pushed, was it was September, and we hired some... maybe it was pushed, was it was September, and we hired someone for the, starting in July, we were looking at three months of double, of overlapping payments.
Yes.
Which we said, if we are going to go down that path, we need to identify how we're going to fund that payment. You brought, you brought an option that said, well, one thing you thought about was, in lieu of having an overlap, hiring an interim external person to start when Mr. Phelps left, to finish out the remainder of the year. That way, we wouldn't have any overlapping salary, and start a hiring process for fiscal '21 next January or February. And the three members of the committee, and you left the room in agreement that that is how we were going to proceed.
That is not what the conversation, was no decision made at the time. I still had not had the conversation with Mr. Phelps as to what his timing was. He was still up in the air, and it wasn't until this past week that we received his letter of retirement. That said, we can, posting date, the starting date of the candidates, it is possible that we can find a good candidate and won't have to go with an interim. The interim is, was always presented as a fallback position for not having the ability to find good candidates, or if he were to retire in December.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Gibbons.
Even if we were to find a qualified candidate, are we not still left with a budget issue where a qualified candidate on X date, and whenever Mr. Phelps is retiring, that there is some overlap there, that we don't have money to fund it?
Yes, if we have, if, so, we have now posted a position that has cascading impacts, the first being, in essence, the first question to any viable candidate would need to be, how flexible are you with the start date? And if you're not willing to start in October, then that either buys you at the start, or we're going to drag this process out, and as of yet, this committee has not been asked or given a proposal of how to fund any potential overlap. So, to me, there is no funding in the budget for an overlap, which means forcing us, you're forcing a situation where we're going out to hire a position where you are going to automatically reduce the candidate pool by lack of flexibility, if we don't have the funding, or you're going to carry out a process to then find that we don't come up with the funding, and then you're going to pull the process, which then, my concern is it then makes the district look bad, if we start a process that we then have to pull off the table, because we didn't have our ducks lined up in a row, and then we go back out six months later and externally are questioning what's going on, because we started a search, we pulled it back, and, I'm sorry, but I categorically disagree that we didn't have a conclusion. There was an absolute conclusion that.
We did not have the facts, that we, we don't even have all the, we don't have the facts.
We had the facts that he was most likely retiring, and we had the facts that his retirement date was going to be in September, there was discussion about possibly December, and actually, the conversation was, when we were having the discussion about overlap, that's September better than December, because it would cost less in overlap, and that's when.
That's correct.
That's when it came up of, well, the interim would allow us to just bring somebody in after the fact. And so we said, okay, great. And in fact, the schedule that I, that, as we were tallying how we were closing the gap, on it I put, because we had a $30,000 placeholder for overlap, and then eliminated it, and said.
That's correct.
And the note on it says, we are funding through an interim person upon, to be funded by an interim external.
After the current president, principal leaves, principal, sorry.
So the, he, his retirement date, he's still verifying with the MTRS, and.
Well, I'm looking at a resignation letter.
Yes.
That he announced to the faculty.
Yes.
He's now put it in the public record here. Now granted, he can try to, he's now stated September 27th, so if this was not clear, then why did he write this letter? If he doesn't know the date, why did he put that letter in writing and have a faculty and staff meeting with his staff?
He's, well, he's intending to, unless he can work with the MTRS to move, to move it up, there might be service. But this is not, that portion of it is neither here nor there. The, in my mind, the interim was a fallback position if we could not find highly qualified candidates that could work within our timeframe. The posting, because of the software, we can go back and change it to an October 1 or September even 27th timeframe, but it would, what I, what I had hoped to do is get the posting out early, and the best, put the district in the best position to attract candidates, because it is the time of year when these positions are being advertised. But certainly, it's rectifiable, and with the budget the way it is, and if there is no, as, as we look at the budget currently, there does not seem to be any wiggle room for some overlap. Things have fallen also, more information is because the potential internal candidate has announced that she is, she's not currently interested, and that also affects things. So it's, the process, I, one, we welcome the school committee to be part of the interviewing process. If you would like me to also reach out and see what the options are, and how one goes about advertising for an interim, that is also possible.
We do not have funding for July 1, so that posting.
Correct.
The process is not good.
Correct.
Because that is inaccurate posting, and that posting needs to come down. You either need to put it to October 1, December 1, or it can't be July 1.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Gibbons.
So, I would, I would like to, I would, I would like us to look at what, if any, differences there are in hiring an interim elementary school principal. I think if we were to change the existing posting as it is today, then to Mark's point earlier, we, we start, go forward with that, we potentially at some point are adjusting that search. So to, to have a process that gives us the most potential to get the candidate that we need from an interim perspective, but in my mind, to be able to have a process for the permanent elementary school principal, we need to go out correctly for the search that we need to complete for next school year. So, in my own opinion, hearing is that that needs to be an interim for a portion of the year. I have concerns about the level of candidates that we would get, and if we want to attract good candidates when we do a full search, when we start that early in 2020, or a couple months into 2020, I think this current search that we're in the middle of, we're still clear on what the expectation is, and that expectation looks like it's an interim position. I don't, I don't know enough to understand candidates, but from what I have been told by those in the education field, that it's challenging at this time of year to get candidates for these types of positions. But as we're related to interim, because of time of year and because of length of first year, I would like us to figure out what it takes to search for an interim school principal, or propose to the committee.
So take down the existing posting?
Correct. Take down the existing posting, determine to look for interim school principal, and at that point, post for an interim principal that will start at the finalized decision by Mr. Phelps as to when his retirement date will absolutely be.
Okay.
So I just put that out there for discussion.
Ms. Briggs.
I don't think I have anything to add.
Okay.
At the moment.
Mark? I concur with Denise. At a minimum, I said that it had to be October 1 or December 1, but I would like to go back to the original, what we did discuss in union, there was agreement on, was an interim principal to get us through to the regular hiring process next spring. And that's how we should proceed. We should take that posting down. Because there is no funding for that posting. Regardless of what Jason's potential date is, there is no funding for that. We've just finished the process, and we certainly knew, he may have written the letter this week, we knew this, we knew that, I think we even talked about that date or the end of September in our verbal discussion. The verbal discussion that he had with you gave this, that date's jumping out at me. It was the end of September. Because we even said that that's just not the best time, but we understand that that is his retirement date due to his birthday.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The only additional point I would like to make is I really do think that our, our pool of candidates here, in conjunction with the limitations that we have on the start date, will be negatively impacted if we're looking to fill the full elementary school principal position, starting even on an October 1 date or a December date.
I'm saying pull it back.
Yeah, and, and, and the, I would just like the best chance possible of getting the best candidates when we open this up at the right time in 2020.
I agree. So, so we're all clear? We're going to pull this posting, Nancy?
Well, it is the authority of the superintendent, the process, but I heard the assumptions and the concern you have that it's too late in the year to attract highly qualified candidates. I think, you know, my hope was that, that, not highly qualified candidates, but it's frequent that if you cannot, then you fall back on an interim position. And that was my understanding, that we would go forth and go ahead and seek highly qualified candidates and do an interim if necessary, but it is, you know, I think, complicated by the fact that the budget cannot support much overlap time. So I will research how to go about seeking interims, what are the typical done. It's not something that we've done in the past, but I will certainly get back to the committee on that.
Two things. One, in the discussion originally, we had indicated there's oftentimes to get interim consultants to, at the principal level, and that there are many people around, and it's been done in various districts, and finding someone to come in and do it, really too, too difficult. So that was one. And the second, in all of what you just said, you didn't answer the question, will the posting be taken down?
Yes, we will, we will take it down tomorrow.
Okay. Do you have a good, Denise, you're good?
Yes.
All right, that is it. We are going to move into executive session, so I need a motion. We're not going to come back into open session, so this will be a roll call vote, but I need a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Gibbons.
I make a motion for the school committee to go in, not to return to open session.
To?
Discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with union and non-union personnel.
And that's a roll call vote.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. The motion's been moved and seconded. Ms. Briggs.
Yes, yes.
Conroy.
Hi.
Ms. Gibbons.
Aye.
And I am an aye as well, so we are going, this meeting is over, it's adjourned, and we are going into executive session.